We had, we went on Zoom as a family. We all watched it together and we were making comments there. Grammy.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Board members. I'm really excited for the board today for the opportunity for you to receive feedback and communication from a number of our stakeholders. We have five panels that have been developed and I think they each bring a unique perspective and I would encourage you to take advantage of having those individuals in front of you to ask questions. I will tell you that Miss Stacia Harris will be facilitating those panels. I also want to, for the public, make everyone aware that I believe that the feedback you receive and the communication will certainly complement what you've heard over the last couple of days. And I appreciate your time to hear from five of our reentry committees that we reactivated. They put a lot of effort in bringing new information and for the record, those five committees referenced the following topics: Curriculum and instructional delivery; student social emotional health and safety; our employee social emotional health and safety; our auxiliary services, which is highlighted by our transportation; our child nutrition; and our maintenance facilities. And then our communications. Certainly, we don't want to forget how important the communications piece is with any type of plan that's put in operation here in Buckham County schools. So with that, I want to turn over the next segment on the agenda, which is a discussion regarding the solar project. As you're aware, our county commissioners have approved that project. It will involve several campuses in Buckham County schools. So I'm going to ask our Director of Maintenance, Mr. Clark Wyatt, to give you some information and again, feel free to ask any questions. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baldwin. Thank you for having me here this afternoon to discuss solar. A little background on where this started and where we've come from. Back in late summer of 2019, the county approached us to collaborate with all of the public stakeholders in Buckham County to help the county achieve their 100% renewable energy commitment that they have made. We talked to them. We looked at a lot of our school sites to try to determine where solar would best fit and came up with nine of our school campuses all across the district. There's at least one in each of the six school districts. And we developed 11 actual solar systems. So you may ask, why are there 11 solar systems on nine buildings? The way Duke Energy or the way these work, they are associated with power accounts. So some of our buildings have multiple accounts. So we may have two systems for the layperson. It will look like one system, but it's actually two separate systems. So back in 2019, over a year ago, we started talking about this. The county did all the bid work, got the bids back, and now we're to this point where they are wanting to sign an MOU with the school system to install these systems on our campuses. I provided with you this document that shows the estimated location of each one of the systems. And I apologize, one of the schools is really small. It's hard to see, but it is a roof mounted system at North Windy Ridge. It's hard to see there. Also, these systems
We had, you went on Zoom as a family. We all watched it together and we were making comments there. Grammy?
Good afternoon. This is a work session for the Buckham County Board of Education. I'm going to call this meeting to order and ask that we pledge allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Thank you. Could I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I have a statement to read so that we all understand the purpose of this meeting. I want to thank everyone for being here today and for those of you that are viewing on YouTube. For our Internet viewers, I want to speak a little about the format of this meeting. This is a work session for Buckham, for the board to consider and discuss several issues. It is typical at work sessions that the board does not take any action or vote on any issues. Rather, after hearing presentations and having a discussion on agenda items, the board will typically decide whether an item should be placed on the agenda for the next regular meeting. Further, the board does not typically take public comment at its work sessions either. The board will take public comment at its regular meeting on October the first, which is tomorrow. During this work session, one of the agenda items is to, one of the agenda items is the continued consideration for our reentry plan. As many of you know, this is and will remain a work in progress. Today, we have the opportunity to hear from staff members and other stakeholders on this issue. The opinions and feedback we hear tonight will be considered in conjunction with many other factors as the board considers return to learn strategies. I anticipate that the discussions today will lead to reentry being placed on the agenda for tomorrow's meeting. Again, I want to remind everyone that this meeting is being streamed live on YouTube, as will the meeting be tomorrow. Thank you again for watching. If there are no questions from the board, I'll turn this meeting over to Dr. Baldwin and we will begin with the agenda.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and board members. I'm really excited for the board today, for the opportunity for you to receive feedback and communication from a number of our stakeholders. We have five panels that have been developed and I think they each bring a unique perspective. And I would encourage you to take advantage of having those individuals in front of you to ask questions. I will tell you that Miss Stacia Harris will be facilitating those panels. I also want to, for the public, make, make everyone aware that I believe that the feedback you receive and the communication will certainly complement what you've heard over the last couple of days. And I appreciate your time to hear from five of our reentry committees that we reactivated. They put a lot of effort in bringing you information. And for the record, those five committees reference the following topics: curriculum and instructional delivery, student, social, emotional health and safety, our employee social, emotional health and safety, our auxiliary services, which is highlighted by our transportation, our child nutrition, and our maintenance facilities. And then our communications. Certainly, we don't want to forget how important the communications piece is with any type of plan that's put in operation here in Buckham County schools. So with that, I want to turn over the next segment on the agenda, which is a discussion regarding the solar project. As you're aware, our county commissioners have approved that project. It will involve several campuses in Buckham County schools. So I'm going to ask our Director of Maintenance, Mr. Clark Wyatt, to give you some information. And again, feel free to ask any questions. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baldwin. Thank you for having me here this afternoon to discuss solar. A little background on where this started and where we've come from. Back in late summer of 2019, the county approached us to collaborate with all of the public stakeholders in, in Buckham County to help the county achieve their 100% renewable energy commitment that they have made. They, we talked to them, we looked at a lot of our school sites to try to determine where solar would best fit and came up with nine of our school campuses all across the district. There's at least one in each of the six school districts. And we developed 11 actual solar systems. So you may ask, why are there 11 solar systems on nine buildings? The way Duke Energy, or the way these work, they, they are associated with power accounts. So some of our buildings have multiple accounts. So we may have two systems for the layperson. It will look like one system, but it's actually two separate systems. So back in 2019, over a year ago, we started talking about this. The county did all the bid work, got the bids back, and now we're to this point where they are wanting to sign an MOU with the school system to install these systems on our campuses. I provided with you this document that shows the, the estimated location of each one of the systems. And I apologize, one of the schools is really small, it's hard to see, but it is a roof-mounted system at North Windy Ridge, but it's hard to, hard to see there. The cost of these systems is $4.5 million. The estimated annual production or savings of power would be roughly $300,000 annually for these systems. On average per site, there's about an 80% offset. So about 80% of the power that's utilized by that building will be produced by solar. These systems are a net metering system, so basically what that means is it will actually be used by the structure as it's being, being developed or being produced, and then the excess will go back to the grid. We have a combination of roof and ground mount systems. The roof mount systems would be at Inca Intermediate, North Windy Ridge, and Owen Middle School. These roof-mounted systems, the reason we chose those is, one, we have relatively brand-new roofs on these structures that are standing seam metal, and they accept solar systems very well. There's a nice system that, how they connect to the roof. There will be no roof penetrations from the solar system there. They have a clip that clips onto the standing seam itself and supports the, the panels and then the, all the wiring goes in through the side of the building. So that's, that was important to us. All of the other systems will be mounted on the ground. They will be ground mounted, they would be fenced in and protected from entry. Big picture, these systems, and this is on average, will start paying for themselves in about 15 years. Roughly year 15, they will start making some money. The MOU that you have in front of you kind of goes through how we've worked with the county, and we appreciate their working with us and ironing out some details financially that, that makes sense for both parties. Initially, when these systems are installed, we will be receiving a rebate from Duke Energy. The rebate will come to us in our name, in the school system's name. Part of this MOU is that we are agreeing to give up that rebate to the county to put towards the debt service. That's going to equate to $750,000 that we will be receiving as these systems are installed.
Per site? $750,000 per site?
No, total.
Total.
Yeah. And we would, we would sign that, that payment over to the county and they would use that for debt service. We would own these systems, they would be in our names, we would maintain them, we would insure them. And the cost of the, the maintenance and the insurance would come out of our yearly review of these systems. So in the MOU, it's, it's agreed upon by us in the county that we will provide an annual review of the solar generated and the money saved from that, the amount of money it cost us to operate them. And then their expectation is that we would reduce our request for energy budget accordingly. I'm just going to make up silly numbers. Let's say that they generate $300,000, it costs us $50,000 to operate, then they would expect our request for energy budget to be $250,000 less because that money is being used to offset.
Less than the year before or less than we would have asked for anyway?
Less than the year before. What their thoughts are, and I, you know, it's, that's money that's being generated by these systems, and that would be until the debt is paid off. Paid off, the way the MOU reads, after 15 years, that it would be a agreement that the, the money generated from these could be used for future solar work, future energy efficiency projects, or to pay for utility bills. It's the way it's spelled out in the MOU. So that's, that leaves, you know, flexibility in what is done with the money once they start generating funds. These systems, excuse me, these systems come with meters that will, we will know exactly how much power, how much solar power is generated. So it would be easy, easily calculated. The month of May is when Duke Energy starts and stops, May 31st is when they start and stop their solar for the year. So you can bank solar generation, but you can't bank it after May 31st. At May 31st, if you have any banked solar generation, it goes away. It becomes Duke Energy. That's the way the law is written. So we will also know that, and let's say we bank, that's why we size these systems at basically 80%. You don't, if you get it up to 100%, you may start banking too much power and you're making too much, basically, and you're losing the, the financial gains from it. Big picture, it's, I think it's good for our system. I think, you know, there's going to be an education platform. We will be able to share, once it gets all going with our children, showing them in each district what's going on. And I think the goal of the county commissioners would be to see these on all campuses at some level. Some of our campuses just don't have the geographic capacity to handle large-scale systems, but that's, that's what they would like to see. So I will stop there and ask you if you have any questions.
Board? Yes?
I have a couple. So I'm looking at the Irwin High School ground mount, and just from a safety standpoint, that's an area, Site One of Two, that personally I walk by five, six days a week when we leave the house and take the dogs for a walk and so forth. Is there any safety issue from being near them and walking around them and that type of thing for the public? And there are a lot of folks that come up and walk on that campus in the evenings.
There would be no issues of being close to them. They will be fenced off where you cannot gain access without basically trespassing, but no safety issue at all for being close to the systems.
And then the only other question I had, how long, you were talking about the amount of money that would be going towards the debt, how long to pay off the debt?
Basically 15 years.
So it's going to be tied into the 15 years? So is the county's proposal, what, do you know what funds they plan to use? This Article 39 sales tax dollars, do you know?
So I do not think so, but I do not know that for sure.
And are they planning, because the, the history of the Article 39 at least have all been 20-year notes, and they've been bundled of all types of projects together. So I don't know, I don't know if it needs to be concerned or not, but if, if it's bundled in with other things to stretch borrowing dollars that are on 20-year notes.
I don't think that's the case. When Chairman Newman called and talked to me about that, I specifically asked about those two funds. And what they're doing is borrowing money for the entire project, which includes Buckham County Schools, I think Asheville City pulled it.
City Schools, Asheville City.
AB Tech.
AB Tech and Buckham County.
Right. So their project is to put these solar panels on tho, those buildings, and they are borrowing money for this whole thing themselves. Does not involve either funds that you're talking about.
It, it appears to me, and I, that it's part of a bigger debt issuance through the county that does not involve Article 39 money, that they are, they are financing this.
I mean, I would, I would hate for it to be in any way, shape, or form involving Article 39 because then we're just, we're taking out of one hand and putting in another and, and we're going to, we're going to, it would be problematic for roof projects and other things where there's already a shortage of money, so.
Also spoke, Brownie called me as well, and the first question I asked him was, would you expect to use Article 39 funds for this project? Because that would be a huge problem for us. And he said absolutely categorically no.
His staff investigate this funding, and because it was such a profitable, profit, endeavor to get to the, to where we were neutral on, on electricity and such as that, that the staff felt like it was a good investment.
And then to tie all that together, at what point in time, once they're installed, does the maintenance and upkeep of them at all the sites become the responsibility of Buckham County Schools? Is it at installation? Is it at, when we take, when the, when the debt's paid? Is it somewhere in between?
At installation. Once the final, once the final inspection would be completed, it would be our problem.
Okay.
And it would be our intent to, to have a service agreement for these systems. Obviously, we don't have the expertise to maintain them, and the, the cost of that service agreement would be reduced, it would be figured in the amount of energy saved throughout the year, or the amount of energy offset. And we would have to show that to the county as a total cost of the, the entire year.
Thank you.
Do you have any kind?
Yeah, there would be a warranty with the, I'm not sure exactly the details of the warranty. I'm sure the panels come. Most warranties have an equipment warranties, a lot longer than the labor portion of it. But yeah, there would be a warranty with these systems. And, you know, what I understand, there's not a huge maintenance issue with them. The inverters sometimes give some problems, but the, these are smart systems that will let you know what's going on with them and let you know when things need to be repaired.
What will be the impact on maintenance with the, the ground system in terms of having to mow around them and so forth? Is that going to be a lot more trouble, more time? How do we account for that?
It will take more time and maybe even some specialized equipment. Not gotten into the details of that yet as far as, you know, how close these panels sit to the ground. Some of it may have to be handwork. So I, I would expect that we would figure in that extra cost of that maintenance into our calculation at the end of the year as well. But yes, I think there will be some additional work involved to properly maintain the inside-the-fence ground mounting.
The one other thing I've had, am I jumping on you? Are you done with your question? Sorry.
Yeah, no, I'm good.
Okay. The one other question I had, I'm still a little bit fuzzy on the calculation of savings from one year to the next, knowing that the weather also changes from one year to the next, so our usage is never the exact same year to year anyway. So is it, is it just sort of a, a good estimate kind of situation? Or are we able to say, based on the number of terms that we use? I don't even know the language, obviously, this is not my field. But are we able to say exactly how much we saved and, and would know? So just trying to get a handle on how much of it is an estimation from year to year versus an exact science?
So I like to use the word generation instead of saved. Saved is a hard word to wrap your brain around. And so these systems will allow us to, we will know exactly how many units of energy are generated from these systems annually.
And that won't change, I guess, based on the weather?
It will change all the time because of weather. So it, it will be different. But we will know what that is. And then we will also be able to tie a dollar figure to that because we know what we pay for those units of energy. So, and I'm going to make up silly numbers again. If we pay a dollar for 100 units of energy and solar generates 50 units of energy, then we should only be asking for $50. Does that make sense? Because half of them have been generated by the, by the sun.
But we're not going to ask until next year.
We're going to be a year behind all the time.
I see. So it's going to be actuals of a year behind?
Correct.
Rather than estimates of the year we're going into?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Mr. Wyatt, one question I have, and I was looking, you have 10 different sites, two of which are at Irwin High School, but basically nine schools, but two sites at Irwin. And I think I counted eight of those are ground mounted, of the 10 different sites, eight are ground mounted. The question I have relates to the ground mounting and the site selected, do you agree that all the sites that have been selected are in the best use of that property? Do you, in other words, do you foresee a need of an expansion of a parking lot or possibly a location of a building five years down the road after we've gone into this and we've got a solar farm sitting right on a site where we might be looking at for potential development? Do you see any of that conflict?
I, I don't. We, we took that into effect when we looked at these sites, and some of our sites were discounted because of those reasons that you're not looking at right now, some of the ones we evaluated.
Right.
Because of, it just wasn't a good place to put it.
Okay. All right. And then you mentioned a, a, information being fed back as far as the performance of the school to the teachers, to the students. Is that in the form of a dashboard or something on computer screen that they could pull up and see how they're doing as far as energy savings?
It is, and the details of that have not been worked out, but that was part of the RFP put out by the county that the winning contractor would have to provide this dashboard integrated equipment. So I don't have the details of that, but that is part of the, part of the agreement that the contractors would provide that, that we would, I'm sure have to work with technology and figure out how that all works out, but yes.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Seeing them, I appreciate Mr. Wyatt and, and your staff for all the great work that you've done in this endeavor.
Thank you.
We can save some money.
Y'all have a great day.
Thank you. You do the same. And at this time, I believe, okay, we need to take a break. It's 10 minutes left.
10 minutes left. 10 minutes left.
I think that Buncombe County is not trying their hardest to let us go back to school, especially concerning that every other school around us at the high school level is returning to in-face instruction. Another thing that I would like to mention, the CDC says that it is harmful for us to not return to school. This board bases their decisions on facts, and these are the facts. The facts are that we need to be back in school. It's hard for us mentally to not be in school. Some people don't have the best home lives, and school is their escape from that, and the board is taking that away from us. The CDC says that there has been a notable difference or increase in the amount of abuse cases since quarantine, and I think that there are better options than what the board is presenting to everyone for the ways that we are returning to school. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Lauren, for sharing your thoughts. Desmond Lidle is up next. He's a student at Irwin High. And if Harlan Glenn can stand up and queue up about six feet away from Desmond Lidle. All right. Thank you.
Hello, Board. I am from Irwin High School. I do want to say that thank you for letting me be here. Virtual learning is kind of hard, but we can do it as students, just like teachers are doing it. I feel like virtual is the best thing to do right now. It's the safest thing to do right now with our numbers in our county going up. We should stay home. Virtual is hard for some students, the ones that need their friend interactions, teacher interactions. It's just hard for those students. I bet you in Irwin High School or in our district, our school is probably divided. Some of us want to be back in school, some of us don't. I honestly believe that we should stay home, and I just hope we do the best thing for the students, teachers, and staff members to keep everyone safe, and just think about that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Desmond. Harlan Glenn is up next. Harlan is a student at Nesbit Discovery Academy. And if Maddie Shin could queue up about six feet away from Harlan. And Harlan, whenever you're ready.
Awesome. Hey, I'm Harlan Glenn. I'm from Nesbit, right across the hall. I want to thank you guys for having us, the students, all here to talk about it. I think it's a great way to understand what we're thinking, because we are thinking about a lot of things. We're worried about either the health of our students, the health of our teachers, like we mentioned before, either being the health of the students because they are having failing grades, because they're contracting the coronavirus, or they just feel unsafe if coming to school. I believe an important thing to keep in mind is that students get bad grades when they lose the ability to communicate with their teachers and understand what their teachers want from them. And they don't get good grades because they don't have the time to do the work necessary, nor the motivation to do the work necessary. And the motivation, I think, is largely out of us coming to school, seeing our friends succeeding, seeing our teachers want us to succeed. And I believe a very important part of school is to be in person, but in these times, the most important aspect in society is really to be healthy, and the best way to do that is to stay online. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Harlan. And Maddie Shin is up next. She's representing North Buncombe High School. And if Anna Sobel could queue up about six feet away from Maddie, and whenever you're ready.
Hi, my name is Maddie Shin. I'm a senior at North Buncombe High School. I want to thank you guys for letting me speak here. It is very disappointing as a senior to know that I'm going to miss out on the last of everything. I play volleyball, and I am a big fan of going to football games on Friday nights, and just knowing that I'm not going to be with my friends is very disappointing. You can go an hour north of Tennessee, and they're playing football, yet we can't step into a classroom and learn in person with our teachers. Every single day I get on Zoom calls. My teachers are always saying, "I want you guys back in my classroom. I'm missing you guys," and it's just really disappointing. Our mental health, I am an exceeding student. I make good grades, and just to know that my friends are struggling mentally and with their classes is just disappointing to me. I am not a person that thinks I'm depressed or anything, but knowing that I am going to be virtual the rest of the semester has made me think twice. Possibly I could be starting to be depressed, I mean, with my mental health. I believe that if we can go out to Walmart, if we can go out to E, if we can go on vacation while we're on virtual school, I believe that we can step into a classroom and learn face-to-face. Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Anna Sobel is up next. She's representing Owen High School. And Anay Felipe de la Cruz, you can go ahead and queue up about six feet behind Anna, and whenever you're ready.
Hello, my name is Anna Sobel. I'm a senior at Owen High School, and thank you all for having us here. I think it's really important, because we are the reason you all are here. So I think that my experience has been very mixed. In some classes, I'm doing really well; in others, I'm struggling. I feel that the AP classes, with the pace that we need to be keeping, is just not matching up with the virtual learning. And I really struggle. My sleep schedule has been thrown off, and I really think that we should be in schools, not only for the learning aspect, but for the social aspect as well. I also think that our mental health outweighs the health risks. Personally, I know many people who have been struggling with anxiety, depression, loneliness, and I really feel that this is more important than the small risk of contracting this virus. If we are all careful, wear masks, social distance, and our schools are at a very minimal capacity, then I really think that this is possible. I think that it is a logistical nightmare, and I do understand that, and not everything is black and white. But I would like to consider putting children and high schoolers back in school. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Anna. And Anay Felipe de la Cruz is next, and she is representing Buncombe County Early College. Anay, whenever you're ready.
Thank you for having me, and my name's, like I said before, Anay Felipe. And from my learning experience, the first two weeks were very overwhelming. There was a lot of assignments, tasks every day. So I guess the first two weeks, like, we were just getting comfortable. It was very stressful. And then I personally didn't go to the onboard, but my sister did, and she really enjoyed it, actually. There wasn't a lot of communication or anything for the reason. And then it was very grateful that you guys were able to, like, she was able to take off the mask. For me personally, I think that virtual is the best way right now, and it's very stressful for some people. I have five classes, three college classes and two high school classes. In those two high school classes, the 30 minutes, I feel like it's overwhelming for the teachers, kind of, that they don't have enough time. And then for us students, though, we have a very minimum amount of time with teachers. But overall, I think it's been, for me, very smoothly. It's not, I can't say the same for everyone else, but I think just like the tight management and like the sleeping schedule is also very bad currently. And overall, just the virtual learning is the best option, just the way.
All right. Thank you, Anay. And I know we are waiting for one student. He's in the building, and so we can give him a second to catch his breath. Board, do you have any questions so far for the students?
I do. I have one. Anna, you mentioned about your AP classes, and you said something-
Don, can you speak into your mic?
I'm sorry. You said something about your AP classes and how you feel like it's not keeping pace with what you really need to be doing. Could you clarify that a little bit?
Would you like me to go over the mic?
Sure. Yes, thank you. And Ms. Page, could you ask that question again directly into the mic for-
Sure. Anna had mentioned that the pace of her AP classes is kind of not keeping up with where you feel like you need to be. Could you talk to us a little bit about that?
Yes. So we are only given 30 minutes of class instruction time with the teacher and the student. So this is a third of the time which we had in semesters prior. We have normally an hour and 30 minutes. Now, most AP classes are two semesters long, so we have to keep a very strict- to stay on schedule, teachers are given a curriculum in which they keep track of where they should be and the weeks of which we have been in school. So with 30 minutes of class instruction time, that puts a third of the instruction, two-thirds actually, away. So we are not getting that, but we are having to recover that on our own time. So that has been really difficult for me personally.
While you're up there, could I ask you another question?
Of course.
How much time would you say you are spending of your own time working on your coursework?
Would this be per class?
Sure.
So some definitely outweigh others. As a senior, I'm not trying to kill myself on top of college applications, not to mention. So for AP Calculus, for example, so we have 30 minutes of Zoom and then a 20-minute class period time with a 10-minute break at the end, which is how this is structured for each class. So after the school day, I usually have about an hour of work that I need to do, but also sometimes I just really need to relearn it. It's really difficult to catch something in 30 minutes. Maybe I'll go onto Khan Academy, or I'll go onto AP Classroom to get more enrichment, and this is what I'm missing in that hour and a half.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Hunter, thanks for joining us. So what we're doing today is just 60 seconds, maybe two minutes, just tell us about your experience with the school year so far.
Thank you. So for this school year so far, I am taking AP Calculus, and the other three of my classes are online, kind of dual enrollment with AB Tech. So I'm taking AB Tech's that and English, which have TC teachers teaching them. And then I'm also taking Sociology and Calculus. I also attended a different school during the spring of my junior year. I participated in a program called the Senate Page Program, which took place in DC. And we were sent home from that program, and then we had online learning from March until June. And I think that the TC Roberson online program is similar to the experience that I had at the Page Program. While we don't have as much time in class, only one of my classes every day has the 30-minute period. Most of them have it once a week, or for the Sociology class, we don't even have live classes. But I believe that I'm still getting a good education while it doesn't have as much FaceTime. It's just more self-learning, more reading, assignments, such as that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Hunter. And I forgot to mention, Hunter is representing Roberson High School. So we can continue on with the questions if the board has any further questions for the students.
I'll ask one more, and I'm going to pose this to any one of you who would like to answer it. Could you talk to us a little bit about your social lives and how you've been impacted upon, like, what kinds of things are you able to do on your own? What kinds of things are you doing? And what kinds of opportunities do you feel like you're being deprived of? And that's not a good word, but what are you missing out on?
I know a really common thing right now to do is to go out on hikes and things like that, because you can be socially distant and be outside and not put yourself at risk, but also still have that social aspect. I think the things that people are really most sad about missing out on are sports and clubs. I know right now at Reynolds, we only have a handful of clubs that are even doing Zooms, and it's really hard to get that information out to people. So I know at our first student council meeting, we had maybe five people show up. So it's just, we're missing out on that aspect, which I know a lot of people are, is what a lot of people enjoy about high school, so I know that's a bummer.
If we were to find a way, I'm just throwing out a hypothetical. If we were to stay remote for a little while longer, if we were to find a way for you to actually go into the school and participate in clubs and other extracurricular activities, would that be something you think you and your friends would be interested in?
I think so. If we went all remote, or if we stayed all remote for longer, those opportunities would definitely be better to have than not to have. I think that it would provide some of that social want that people are looking for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for answering.
Can you come back? I've got a question for you, too, while you're there. Save you the walk. So currently, we're in this remote plan with Monday, Tuesday synchronous, and then Wednesday is synchronous, Thursday, Friday synchronous, as you know. And if we were to go back into Plan B with students in the classroom, you would be either a Group A or Group B, so you would be in the school for two days and not in the school for three days. So can you talk about your thoughts of the consistency of every day kind of having a similar schedule, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, online, being able to see people's faces, no masks, all that, as compared to the benefits of being in person, but not every day?
I think it's, personally for me, I like that consistency of going to Zoom, seeing everyone in my classes, well, virtually, every day. I like that consistency, but I know that some people would rather have one or two days of actual interaction with people rather than seeing people virtually every day.
So it's kind of a trade-off either way?
Yes, for sure. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Would anyone else like to answer that question?
So the benefit that I'm getting from virtual is social skills. I work at a restaurant in Hendersonville. I'm a waitress, and that's really been keeping me going as far as social skills. It's just so disappointing as a senior to know that I'm missing out on all the things that I knew I could have my senior year, that I thought of my freshman year, and I would just really like to see us back in school. But yeah, that's really the only benefit I'm getting from virtual school. And I just don't understand why we haven't reacted like this when it's flu season. There's a 99% survival rate from the CDC. They have given us that percentage, 99%, and I don't understand why we're acting like this. I mean, why we're not acting like this when it's flu season. I'm just not, I don't, I would like to be back in school. Thank you.
Do any board members have any other questions for the students?
As seniors, you know, from our freshman year, we look forward to these things like prom and senior parties and Friday night football games. And as me, a senior, I play softball and volleyball, and last year, my softball season got cut short, and now my volleyball season has been greatly affected. I also don't understand, like Maddie said, how we can do certain things. Like, I'm allowed to have sports workouts right now. I can go to the school, wear a mask, get my temperature checked, walk in, take my mask off, play volleyball for two hours, an hour and a half, and then go home like nothing ever happened. But I can't walk into a school and sit in a class for an hour and a half with a mask on, socially distanced, with all the safety precautions. People are outliving their lives right now. The governor has announced that we will be going into Phase Three very soon, and that means the whole state's going to be opening back up, and that means that we should be able to be back in school. So I feel like the efforts made are very low, and I feel like it's depriving me of a lot of things that I should be experiencing my senior year, so thank you.
Ms. Carver, may I ask you a question as well? You said that people are out despite the schools being closed. Your peers are out living their lives. They're doing things. Do you know any of your peers that are working part-time, maybe?
Yeah, I work. I work at a place called AR Workshop in Asheville. It's like a little workshop where you go and you make crafts and stuff like that. We're having people in. I have a lot of friends who work as waitresses. They've been working basically the whole time, ever since we've gotten out of Phase One and the restaurants have been able to seat people. They've all been working, yeah.
So would it be fair to say that the majority of students, and y'all, if you have a different opinion, please sound off, but it seemed like when I go out, if I go to the grocery store or to a retail store, you look around and you see children and young adults like yourselves of all ages, you know, like you say, having their life. Now, of course, if we entertain the idea of going ahead and opening our schools back up, we're going to do that under some specific guidelines you alluded to, the W's of wait, watch, or wash your hands and wear a mask. I hear things sometimes, people say, "Well, students aren't going to comply with that. There's going to be a lot of pushback." Do you think that the trade-off, you're getting to come back into the school, do you think students will accept that, saying, "Man, we're so happy to be here"? Will they comply with those kind of guidelines?
I definitely do think that. And I was a part of the two weeks of onboarding, and we had absolutely no problems in Inca High School with anybody following guidelines. Everybody was actually very happy to just be back in school and interacting with people rather than looking at people through a computer screen for 30 minutes. We were all just so happy to be back. You know, nobody's really stopped living their lives as teenagers. You know, we've been with our friends all summer long, you know. Nothing has really kept us from that, and then I feel like that aspect has kind of been neglected. But yes, I think that everybody would greatly and gladly comply with any kind of restrictions that are put. I feel like the two weeks of onboarding, if we can go back for two weeks, I feel like we should be able to go back for the rest of the year.
You said you were a senior this year.
Yes, sir.
Seniors are really just that, they're the senior population in the school. And do you feel like the senior group, your senior class, would take the leadership role in demonstrating that? And you're always seen in masks, you're always complying, you see a underclassman without and say, you know, whatever.
Yeah, definitely, because, you know, I feel like everybody's getting hit very hard with this, but I feel like seniors are taking the greatest toll, especially with the first part of their senior year, you know, with college applications, and we need to be in school for those things. I'm an only child, so my parents don't know how to fill out a college application. That's what navigators and counselors are for. And while we're not in school, it's very hard to get that help, and it can be very frustrating to find the help. But yes, I think that seniors would greatly step up, because it's not just my future at risk, it's the juniors', the sophomores', and the freshmen's' risk as well.
And if I may, I would just turn, I'm going to ask the question, I'm going to turn, because I'm going to ask for a show of hands. And I would just simply ask the question, are any of you concerned about any of your student peers not being compliant with the rules that we set forth? And if so, how many of you are not worried about that, raise your hand. The students, your fellow peers wearing masks and following the three W's, if you're allowed to go back into the school.
Worried or not worried about it?
If you're not worried about it, show of hands. Okay, sort of almost 100% is not worried about it.
So the one thing that I would-
Actually, do you want to come up to the podium?
Yes.
So in school, I am not worried about students complying. I think that being back in the school is the reward itself, so we should earn that reward by wearing masks and complying. However, like you had mentioned, students are outliving their lives. Maybe, potentially, should there be an agreement between students and Buncombe County that we are maintaining social distance outside of schools and maintaining, wearing masks outside of schools? Because we don't get, we don't bring the virus in from the school, we bring it from outside. So that would be the only logistical thing with coming back to school, is making sure that not only are schools, are students compliant in school, but are they maintaining those outside of the school? Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more question for Lauren. Sorry to make you come back up. Just going back to what you said about everything you imagined your freshman year and picturing yourself going to prom and all the other things, knowing that in the time of COVID, a lot of those things are not going to be possible even if we do have students back in school. Can you talk a little bit about how you would manage those expectations, knowing that even if we do bring you back, it's not going to be the picture you had your freshman year?
I think that the picture freshman year is actually achievable. Like Maddie said, you can go an hour north of here, and schools are wide open. Schools are having packed-out football games, they're in schools full-time, their normal schedule. So I think that it is achievable if we really want to make it achievable.
Okay. Thank you.
Are no more questions? Oh, you want to say something? Come on up, Hunter.
So I just wanted to bring up the point that my sister is a sophomore at Chapel Hill, and she went, they reopened Chapel Hill for two weeks, and then it closed down. I forgot the exact number. I think about 20% of her dorm ended up contracting COVID. And what they didn't do is they didn't have the students tested before they came back on campus. A lot of students weren't wearing masks unless it was absolutely mandatory in that area, and a lot of them were just not, like a lot of fraternities, sororities, were having other social events in which those rules weren't conformed to. And I agree that it's important, even outside of school, to try and bring up the point that students should be social distancing, should be paying to the same rules that they're doing within school. I believe that's important just to prevent, like was said, you don't get COVID from school, you get it from other places, and you bring it to school, and then you spread it to other people. Thank you.
To add before we take a break? All right. Thank you all so much.
If I could, I don't have a question. I would just like to say, I'm not going to turn around so that it can be heard. I appreciate all of you being here. Several of you said, "Thank you for allowing us to be here." You're welcome here anytime. You are. You're why we're here, and you'll be welcome at school board meetings while you're a student and when you're no longer a student in Buncombe County schools. Taking the time that you took to put your thoughts together and to express to us your feelings, what you've seen, what you've heard, what classmates are talking to you about, all of those things are important. And I, for one, and I think I can speak for the entire board, we appreciate that, but you are welcome here at any time, so please know that.
All right. On that note, everyone, we are going to take a quick break, and we will come back with our teacher panel next.
will come back with our teacher panel next. All right, welcome back, everyone, and welcome, teachers. Thank you so much for being with us today. So as a reminder, I'm going to call each of you up to the podium, and you'll have about three minutes to share your thoughts and feedback regarding your classroom experiences so far this year. I'm not going to set a timer, but I'm going to keep an eye on the time and ask you to wrap up when you reach the three-minute mark. So to get us started, let's begin with John Shoup. He teaches math at Reynolds High School, and if Angie Hall could queue up about six feet away from him. And Mr. Shoup, whenever you're ready.
My name is John Shoup. I'm a fourth-year actual world history teacher at A.C. Reynolds High School. Thank you for the earnest work of this school board and this administration. As an employee and as a parent to a junior in high school, I am grateful for your service to our community. It is impossible for me to speak for every teacher at A.C. Reynolds. I know my experiences overlap with others, but not with all. Physical education teachers and those in the arts have very different classrooms than mine, and therefore have different issues. I speak from my experience, I trust others will have a chance to speak from theirs. Presently, things are going well. Today is the 32nd day of the semester, and yesterday I completed my 20-second Zoom meeting with each of my classes. Virtual attendance has been good. In the last three days, I checked roll on 204 students, and absences are below 3%. The absences included a student moving from North Dakota when he couldn't get Wi-Fi on a highway, another student who's sick and in the hospital, and yes, indeed, one who slept through an alarm. My point is, every student at ACR has a teacher, a counselor, and an administrator, and if that student is unaccounted for, our community casts a wide net to make contact. Zoom classrooms are indeed imperfect, but they offer some clear advantages for students in the conditions we face due to this pandemic. In fact, for high school students, I assert Zoom classes are significantly better for learning than fragmented rotational A and B cohorts coupled with remote learners. First, the entire class is together. I have been pleasantly surprised at how personal the Zooming experience has become with students. We see each other's faces up close every day, have names in the boxes, communicate aloud, and via chat. I've felt the warmth of being welcomed into the homes of students. I feel connected with students via Zoom, and I believe students are connecting with one another. Chat boxes, I am finding, are the new way of passing notes. I believe these connections would be compromised, and efficiency regarding pacing guidelines would be decelerated if I were required to teach a cohort of students in the classroom while simultaneously teaching virtual cohorts remotely. For one thing, teachers will wear masks in Zoom meetings, which lessens important face-to-face interaction if the students were in our room. Secondly, we found that there's a lag time in Zoom meetings. Students in the classroom would hear the distracting echo of a teacher speaking live, then the words coming across Zoom airwaves. If the present cohort was to turn off their computers, then the result would be fragmentation and lack of dialogue with classmates. Fragmented cohorts would decelerate the learning process for our students. The state of North Carolina has not given grace to pacing guidelines, and this is problematic. Because the first semester is only 85 instructional days versus 100 for the second semester, that in two weeks were used up with the onboarding segment of Be and Beyond, high school teachers are already behind where we should be four weeks in the school year. As stated earlier, today's the 32nd day of this semester, and I've only had 22 Zoom class meetings with a full roster of students. I'm on schedule to have 64 Zoom class meetings, which would be reduced to 60 if four days in December are taken up for exams. 64 days at roughly an hour apiece is 64 hours of class time. Compare that to 85 days of 90-minute classes, which is 127 and a half hours. Instruction time has been cut in half, yet teachers and students are being held accountable for the entire semester. Just this week, our state has determined that English 2, Math 1, and Math 3, and Biology must take state-administered EOC exams.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shoup. Do you have much more? You're a little over three. Do you have, like, a sentence left?
I'm not done.
Do you have just a paragraph left?
Two paragraphs.
Okay, okay.
Personally, to meet the demands of the curriculum, I would rather have Wednesdays back as class meeting day and return to the schedule of five per week. The cumulative effect would be 10 more class periods, which, curriculum-wise, can be an entire unit. Another option that colleagues have discussed would be to make final exams after Christmas break and even up the semester's cumulative class days. I've been having virtual meetings with at-risk and exceptional students before and after Zoom meetings. Sometimes these meetings are simply walking through the daily assignment, and other times digging deeper into an interesting topic. Additionally, students that need face-to-face meeting times are getting it. 26 students were at A.C. Reynolds High School today when I left, getting face-to-face instruction from teachers. This is not a Wednesday-only event. In the last week alone, I have had eight one-on-one sessions in my classroom, giving students important individual intention. These meetings occur in the morning before first period or in the afternoon after fourth. Our football team has a study for at-risk players Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and our men's and women's basketball team on Tuesday, Thursday. The ACR community is working hard to be what our students need us to be. Thank you again for including a wide range of voices in the conversation regarding our community's plan.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shoup. Ms. Angie Hall is up next, she is representing INCA Intermediate, and while Angie is walking up, if Ms. Shirley Young could queue on up behind her. And whenever you're ready, Ms. Hall.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name's Angela Hall, and I'm a fifth-grade ELA teacher at INCA Intermediate. This is going on my fourth year there. Just wanted to share just my thoughts about how it's going so far. I wanted to start with safety, because that's an important aspect for students as well as teachers and staff members. I feel extremely safe at my school right now. We have some of, I believe, some of the best custodians in the county, and our procedures are set up to where, you know, we practice the social distancing, and I feel that myself, I feel very safe, and I feel all of my kids are very safe. So I'm enjoying getting to see my kids face-to-face this week. It was really amazing to see them after having, you know, five weeks of Zooms. So we're the hybrid model, but the intermediate school has a little problem, or not a problem, but a difficult situation in that we are a 5-6 school. So according to the governor's rule, that K5 is supposed to return back to Plan A, if I'm understanding, and so I'm kind of a little bit wondering how the logistics are going to work with a 5-6 school. If, you know, I don't think it's possible for half of the school to come back to a Plan A and have to stay in this hybrid model, but I feel like that can be worked out. I feel like, but I do want to return to Plan A. I'm anxious to have all my kids there and see them and be with them. So I'm hoping that when we do return to that, we do it thoughtfully, and, you know, which I think we will. The challenges have been juggling face-to-face and having one group face-to-face and one on Zoom has been very challenging here this week, when you're, you know, trying to talk to one group on the computer, you have your mask, and you have students in the room. I'm learning to deal with that. The technology is phenomenal, we've got, you know, everything available to us, which has made it a little easier, but we're adjusting. So I'm looking forward to the next group of students coming in tomorrow, my B students. My wanting to go back, go to A plan eventually, as long as it's done safely, is I'm feeling like the one group that I worry the most about with my students is my, are my most vulnerable students, I feel, in this, in the model, the more time we spend virtually, I feel like those are the kids that seem to me to suffer the most with engagement in learning. And that's, I'm talking about my students that are learning, you know, English language learners and have socioeconomic things that we're working on. I feel like as a teacher, those are my kids that I worry the most about, and I'm having the hardest time keeping them engaged when they're not in school. So that's something that I hope that, you know, we can continue to work on and think about as we do transition to an A, that that's the population that I really would like to focus on so that we can close that achievement gap with them. But I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you for letting me share my thoughts, and I appreciate you listening to us today. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hall, for your time. All right, Ms. Shirley Young is up next, she's representing Emma Elementary, and if Kevin Kimbrough can queue up, and just, you can stand maybe six feet away from Ms. Young. All right, Ms. Young, whenever you're ready.
I'm Shirley Young, and I want to thank the board for inviting me today. I've been teaching in Buncombe County for a number of years. In fact, this is my 45th year of school teaching in Buncombe County. And I do it because I love what I do. This is something that has been very unusual for all of us, and we all had to adjust to it. And I think that my biggest concern is that I look at the little children that I teach, and I see the different things that are happening to them, that some of them are beginning to fall behind, but yet, and still, I'm still very concerned about them still coming to school. It's been a joy to have half of them in school and the others on Zoom, and I told my parents, and I told them, I say, well, I'll be doing Zoom with you, what are you, with your students, do you want me to do it later or with the whole class? My parents prefer that I do it with the whole class, because they want the same instruction for their children at home that I'm giving in the classroom. So I've been doing Zoom as well as teaching face-to-face this past week. I've been very concerned, because I've seen a lot of my children have fallen behind from even kindergarten, and I'm not sure what to do about it. But then I'm still concerned, too, that as we go into the season where flus and everything happens, what will happen to the students? But the children are very excited about coming back to school. My coworkers are glad to have them back. I called my coworkers before coming today, and they said, we're just glad to have children back in the building. So, but our biggest concern is that still with some of the children that are on remote, that if when they come off in January, some of them have compromising conditions, will they still be able to stay on remote, or will they have to come back into the classrooms? My parents are very excited, we've had a lot of problems with technology, but I'm very appreciative for all our tech people who are very willing to come to school to help us out. We've had to have parents over and teach them how to do iPads and how to get to programs, how to do with the different links. But still, the parents are, want their children back in school with us. And I just want to, again, say that I'm just thankful for the wisdom of the board and our superintendent, and I thank you for listening to me today. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Young. Kevin Kimbrough, you are up next. Mr. Kimbrough is representing INCA Intermediate and INCA Middle School, and if Mary Whitlock could queue up behind Mr. Kimbrough. And whenever you're ready.
Hi, my name is Kevin Kimbrough, I am the band teacher at INCA Middle School and INCA Intermediate School. I also work extensively with the high school band program, we all work together, so I've had a lot of experience teaching 6th through 12th grade. I know that we are acting as the voice of teachers today, and I'll kind of share some insight from other elective teachers that I've spoken to as well, but I also hope... But I also hope, depending on how much time we have, hopefully I can also share what kids and parents have told me, too. I'll start positively. Some of the pros that we've had, especially starting this week, it's been really nice to see a lot of the kids in person, the students who we have seen in person. We've been able to get a lot of their work caught up, like if they were having technology problems, which we have had a lot of technology issues in the INCA district. Even with the hotspots, some of the students are having a hard time connecting because of lack of cellphone reception. Like I said, it's nice to have students in the building. The students who are hybrid are keeping up for the most part. And for some of the teachers, they said that it's been easier to differentiate instruction on this hybrid model, seeing some of the students in the classroom and some of the students online. Some of the, some of the cons to what we've, what we've been experiencing, most of the teachers that I've spoken to have said that they think it would be easier if we were either all virtual or all in person. The main, the main difficulty that they're experiencing is they're having to teach students virtually and in person at the same time. So we're kind of between a rock and a hard place where we're having to decide whether we want to focus on the students that are on a computer or focus on the students that are there in person. It's just like a logistical nightmare having to do all those things. Depending on the schedules of some of the teachers, and I have talked to teachers from all districts, not just INCA, some of the elective teachers are only getting to see their children once per week when the core teachers are getting to see them four days, which makes it very challenging to be consistent with our pacing and uploading our assignments to our Google Classrooms and such. The student participation has been pretty inconsistent. This is just coming from the INCA district. Like I said, there have been a lot of connectivity issues. And this is nothing against our social workers. They've been working tirelessly to make sure the kids are connected. It's just purely a cellphone reception problem. Less consistency with the students who are either online or the students who are in person. For example, before we started this week, before Monday, we had, most of the teachers had 150 minutes a week. So whether it was like K through, you know, K through 12, they had 150 minutes a week. I guess 12 would have been an hour and a half total of instruction, or maybe a little bit more, depending on their teacher. Now elective teachers at some schools are only seeing their students for 60 to 95 minutes per week. And that's like a huge, I mean, that's a huge contrast. And that, again, that's just starting this week. That's not how it was right off the bat, which is why a lot of teachers would rather it just be one way or the other.
And Mr. Kimbrough, that was timed. Do you have just one more quick thought to share?
Yeah, can I? I know that we just had students in here, but it'll take me like 30 seconds to just share what some of my kids have said. Every two weeks, I've been checking in with my kids. We'll just take a whole class, and I'll say, "Hey, how are things going in general?" They don't even necessarily just need to share how band is going. I ask them to share how things are going across the board. Some of the positive things they had to say are they're able to get their work done quickly. The workload has been manageable at the, at the middle school level. Some of the things that they're having issues with, I mean, obviously, they're going to have distractions when they're at home. There are students who are, I have, I have several students who are at home with their younger siblings that are in kindergarten or first grade, and they're having to help them, they're having to be their teacher, you know, and helping them make sure they're doing all their assignments. And they're having to worry about all their course load because both of their parents are at home working. And the last thing that they said they were having a hard time with was, you know, in the arts, it's such a social and emotional thing that it's not, they're not as motivated to practice their instruments or work as hard as they need to to be successful because when you're in a band room making music together, it's a totally different experience than when you're sitting there by yourself at home. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kimbrough. And Mary Whitlock is up next. She is representing North Buncombe High School. And if Sarah Callaway could queue up behind her, whenever you're ready.
Thank you so much, and thank you for having us today. When I was asked to be a part of this panel, I quickly realized that if I were going to speak on behalf of the amazing teachers in this county, then I would need to reach out to teacher leaders at other schools and districts to make sure that our collective voices were heard. While we may differ in our educational approaches, what we stand united in is our dedication to the students and the families of Buncombe County Schools. Many of us are the products of Buncombe County Schools, and we are vested in the success of our families and our students. When I asked teachers at North Buncombe, "What's working well with remote?", and they responded with the following. Everyone's getting the same instruction. Kids are figuring out the schedule. They're working and getting into a routine. Learning is happening. Students seem to be more comfortable being themselves, which increases their level of engagement in the class. Students are not as concerned with or distracted by what other students are doing. My students have told me that they prefer remote learning and enjoying the ability to Zoom with me one-on-one for extra help, which doesn't feel uncomfortable since there's no one else present while we are talking. Students send me messages via Remind and Google Classroom as they are working, as if they have questions, excuse me, as they are working, if they have questions, and I'm able to give them immediate feedback, as I would in the classroom. At this time, I am able to Zoom mask-free with all my students at the same time, and I'm able to progress in my curriculum. Based on assessment of my students and feedback, they are learning. Meeting with A, B, and remote students on a daily basis to provide continuity of instruction, equity in construction, and also to engage in face-to-face conversations, albeit virtual, about questions that they have related to class. Students are engaged in Zoom. They are asking questions, and they have good discussion. I can share my screen with them and model the way questions should be answered. I can still have small group activities, thanks to breakout rooms. I can meet with students before and after school through Zoom and tutor them one-on-one in small groups. Currently, students are Remind messaging me pictures of what they're working on, and I can give them quick feedback. It is as close to walking up and down the aisles and helping them as I can get in a global pandemic. When I asked teachers their concerns of being remote, inability to facilitate labs, this came from a CTE teacher. Because we are time restricted, we're going, we may not be able to cover everything in our curriculum. I still have students without internet connection. They are on a hotspot waiting list, but we're six weeks in, and I'm concerned about their progression. I know this is not the best way to present material. Some students need someone to keep them on task, making sure it gets done. But again, it's the best we can do in a global pandemic. Another teacher, there are a few students who are disengaged. However, 75% of those students who are disengaged are remote, and they would not be back in the building anyway. Social, emotional connections, depression, lack of motivation, parent frustration, all concerns. And admin and guidance are reaching out to students that are consistently participating. Some are being brought into the building to get some one-on-one needs. We actually have a drop-in technology assistance window. At the North Buncombe District, I encourage you all to come see it. Three days a week, students can walk up, bring their device, and get one-on-one attention if they need it. I asked teachers to briefly share their concerns about the possibility of students returning to the building, and these were their answers. "We can't engage in labs and interact with students, so why aren't we just staying virtual if I cannot provide them that instruction?" At this point, I think transitioning to a hybrid model, as we've gotten a good momentum going, could actually end up being an overall detriment rather than a help to our students. How beneficial in-person schooling will be for the A, B kids if they're still essentially doing full remote work through their LMS? Another teacher, simply please let this happen. Is that a time? There are obvious health risks. I worry about losing students during hybrid synchronous learning when I'm wearing a mask during Zoom. I have tested this with the class for a mere 10 minutes. Students indicated they were frustrated. They couldn't hear me as well. They could not see my face as I gave instruction modeling class activities. I fear losing that momentum with them if we change to a hybrid. I worry about supervision in the hallway as students move through or before class day change. I would normally be out there monitoring students, talking with them, meeting those, and making those social-emotional connections. But now I'll be inside my classroom, cleaning desks, worrying about student health and safety as teachers as we should be. The overall takeaway, and I have much more information, and I made packets for each of you if you care to look at it because I know that a concern was data. So I have my surveys that were at my school to share. But the overall concern is this. Of the students who seem to be struggling the most, they are remote. The statistics at our school and across the county are high. And if they're not going to be brought back into the building, then what is the difference? What are we making a difference with? Thank you so much for your time today. I appreciate it, and thank you for asking me to stand for Buncombe County educators.
All right, thank you, Ms. Whitlock. Ms. Callaway, you're up next. Sarah Callaway is representing W.D. Williams. And if Paula Denga could queue up behind her. And whenever you're ready, Ms. Callaway.
Okay, hi, I am Sarah Callaway. I'm a fourth-grade teacher at W.D. Williams Elementary. I've kind of just collected some thoughts and feelings of myself and the K5 teachers at my school that I'm going to share. So I was very excited to see my kids this week. That was a highlight of my week. Plan B Beyond was very difficult reaching all of my students. I had some kids joining Zoom, some not, some turning in work, some not. So seeing them face-to-face in the classroom, granted, that was only half so far, I feel like we're making more connections and we're kind of filling in those gaps that we missed during Plan B Beyond. But the hardest thing is that, sorry, I'm losing my thoughts, sorry. So the kids at home, so my A kids I had in person, my B kids were at home, it was really hard to touch base with them. They zoomed in for the meetings, but other than that, my attention is on my kids in the classroom. So that's the hardest part, is that they're getting the live lesson, but they're not getting the support they need during the day because I'm giving my attention to my kids in person. So as a teacher, that's been really hard for me because I want to walk my kids through everything, be with them all day long, help them with everything they need. And I feel like I'm spread very thin on that. I also feel, and I, for some other teachers, too, that we're doing double the work. So we're making one plan that we're following for all of our kids, but then we're making digital copies and paper pencil copies. We've had a lot of parents stress how much they want paper pencil for their kids so they can get off-screen time. So when they're in the classroom, we're trying to do paper pencil. But then at home, they still need that digital copy so we can get their work. So it is a lot of work. After my kids dismiss at 1:30, I feel like I'm spending the entire afternoon just creating digital copies. It's really hard to plan ahead. I feel like I can only plan one or two days ahead at a time. Granted, everything's planned out pretty far out, but just making the digital copies, making the assignments, making sure I have everything for my kids, that's been a really hard piece for me and some other teachers at school. But we do love seeing the kids. I don't want to sound completely negative. Seeing them in person is amazing. They're so excited to be there. We have to do a lot of mask reminders because they're still getting used to keeping it on their face. It's not a blindfold. So there has been a lot of reminders, but they're excited to be there. And I want to give them my full attention when I'm there. But I can see we've made a lot of growth and progress. I just hate that I'm not there for my kids who are at home learning. They're zooming in through the lessons, which is great. They're there, they're present. But it's hard to teach through a mask when I have kids a couple feet in front of me, and then I have my camera off to the side where I'm zooming. I feel like I'm screaming because I want them to be able to hear me through the computer, but then also my kids to hear me in person. I know that could be a tech piece, possibly microphones. Also, when we're zooming, it's hard because they're, I'm using my teacher device to share my screen so the kids in person can see it. But also, I can't stretch it to where they can, the kids zooming can see me face-on, like they were in the classroom. So that's really hard. I feel like every couple of minutes, I'm running over to my camera. "Did you guys understand that? Did you hear me? Do you have any questions?" So that's a big piece, is just making sure they're getting the same instruction. I know they're hearing the same lesson, but just making sure they're hearing all of it. I know some concerns from some of the other teachers are the combo classes. We do have some teachers that are teaching first and second grade all together. And some of these teachers have never taught at other grade level. So they're doing a combo class, and they're struggling to hit both pieces of curriculum at the same time for a grade level they haven't taught. So I think the stress levels are really high. But overall, we're excited to see the kids in Plan B. We like seeing their faces. We're happy they're there. It's just, it's stressful, and we're trying to make it through every day at a time. But we really do enjoy having that Wednesday, that designated planning day. That's really important. I know I spent most of my day after checking with my kids creating assignments to get through the rest of the week. I know we're all just kind of getting through right now, but we do enjoy seeing the kids. Another big concern was Plan A in the future. I do have a lot of coworkers that can't go see their families if we do go into Plan A because they have elderly people that could get sick, and they don't feel safe if we go into Plan A. So I do have a lot of people that holiday plans do, like seeing their family, that's how they relieve their stress. They can't see those family members that they love. So that was another big concern about potential Plan A. But we do love our kids, and we're so excited to see them. I can't wait to see my other half. But it's very stressful, but just, there's some other pieces that could be worked out. But it's, it's hard teaching with a mask on, zooming, and live at the same time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. Paula Denga is up next. She's representing Estes Elementary. And if Ms. Beranda Hagan can, well, actually, you can stay right where you are because you're, you're good. All right, Ms. Denga, whenever you're ready.
Thank you for inviting me to be here today to share the perspectives of staff members throughout the surveys that we have shared with Buncombe County Schools employees. I also represent a third-grade classroom at Estes Elementary, and I am teaching a virtual class right now. And I first want to mention, you know, this is a global tragedy. It is an American tragedy. And we want to share that we know how difficult this decision is for the school board and all of the varying perspectives that are coming before you. We know the parents and the students are struggling, and they have difficulties with this as well. Because 40% of our respondents are parents or grandparents of children who are in our school systems. And we understand what it means to multitask and work while we're helping our own children through some of these hardships. So this is very personal for us as well, not to mention the fact that we have all gotten involved in this profession because we take children and their futures personally. And by extension, we take their families and their futures very personally. The, one of the largest concerns, I think, in return, and no one would deny that we want to be with our children. But one of our greatest concerns in returning is the safety of our students and our staff, and by extension, their families as well. We know that the classroom in common areas are inherently different than going out to a mall or going out to a restaurant or someplace in public where they are socially distancing and they are at 50% capacity. And so we know that when we bring hundreds and hundreds of children into our classrooms in our schools and hundreds of staff members to serve them, we are inviting hundreds and sometimes thousands of environments of different temperaments and people who would adhere to protocols in various ways. We know the logistics of schools are very, very different than what a smaller environment might allow. So we take those experiences and we bring them into our classrooms. And we look at the safety protocols that we have, and we look at the classroom management structures that we have. And we ask ourselves, are we able to limit that kind of cross-transmission? And are we going to keep ourselves safe so that we can continue to learn for months and months to come? I think it's important, too, to remember that we have common areas like lunchrooms and the delivery of lunches, common hallway transitions in high schools especially, where students are going to be leaving their classrooms en masse and going to intermingle with one another in the hallways. And we can't control every little moment of all of these hundreds of people that are in our buildings. And so knowing that people are outliving their lives, like we've heard in here today. We know we're all outliving our lives. Families are living their lives. Staff is outliving their lives. So we know that it's not just each one of us, but it's all of the different connections that we're making out in the community that we're bringing back to this one common place, or in this case, 43 common places that we would be coming to. Safety is the most important thing. And we're so fortunate that Buncombe County is enjoying such low positive rates right now. And we are enjoying those low positive rates because we have been diligent. We have made some hard decisions, sometimes controversial decisions, but we've made decisions in the best interest of health and children and health and families and health and staff. And so we have our low transmission rates, but we haven't been in school very long. And the most recent article yesterday by the Asheville Citizen Times represents that we're seeing a spike in our cases right now because of holidays. And holidays would be one reason to see spikes in cases, but so might bringing hundreds of children and teenagers into buildings together. And we have to be very cautious about how we do that in a strategic way, mindful of the science and the data. And there's not a lot of data about bringing children into schools yet. We're learning and sometimes we're learning the hard way. The other part that's difficult for, for the re-entry process is that it has to be done very well so that we can deliver all of the promises that we're making to bring children back to instruction and bring children back into a social environment that unfortunately is going to be very different than it was before the pandemic. It's not the classroom that they remember from back pre-March, pre-February. It's very, very different. We want to deliver on those promises. But I heard it say so many different ways that teachers are going to do whatever it takes. And teachers do do whatever it takes. We have for, for years and years and years. But there's a point at which that line becomes drawn too tight, that teachers can't do whatever it takes because whatever it takes is so far beyond the extraordinary already. So we have to be mindful that while we're trying to teach this Zoom class, while we're doing in-person over here, that that involves an exponential amount of planning. The art of teaching is not as simple as people might imagine it to be. And bringing that into the classroom and making sure we reach out to children is going to be our most important job, keeping them safe and giving them what they need. And so we want to make sure that when we do that, we can actually do the things that we're being asked to do and that it's as consistent as possible throughout the county and throughout the schools so that all of our teachers can do those things and that they're given the support that they need. And our county has been very good about bringing people together and talking about these things. We've been very fortunate to be at the table with so many of the committees that Dr. Baldwin referenced earlier today, to hear all of the pieces of that puzzle. But we still have work to do. And I just want to share some statistics real quickly because I'm sure I'm going to get the, the wrap it up very shortly. But we did a survey and we got hundreds and hundreds of responses. And we found that while Plan A is, is an opportunity now based on the governor's announcement, we got a very small, 13%, 21% of our respondents are ready for Plan A right now. We're just transitioning into a Plan B just two days ago. And we need to get, to establish that and make that work and find those routines so that we can reach those kids. We know those special populations are out there and that they need us desperately. We want to be with them too. We only just started being able to bring them back to us in a way that's not just remote. So that's an important statistic, I think. Also, our statistic for return dates is overwhelmingly, the preponderance of responses was that we should not come back to a more face-to-face version of our instruction until after the first semester. And that goes for elementary, intermediate, middle and high school. That no matter where they are in the plan right now, the next step to more face-to-face needs to breathe. We need some time. And of course, as we enter the flu season, we know we're going to have more challenges. We also know we have to plug some gaps. We have a great document that's been established and it still has some work to do where the guidance of managing Plan B helps us establish what we can do consistently throughout the county at all of our schools so that we can do those things that children need the most. And that we're allowed to be innovative and that we're allowed to bring new ideas and sometimes do something a little bit out of the box because that's what works for our kids at this school, but might not work for the kids at that school. Our teachers need to feel safe so that they can be there and present mentally, emotionally and physically. And our students' learning conditions are predicated on our teachers' working conditions. We want to be with these children. We just want to make sure we do it well. So thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you, Ms. Denga. And Beranda Hagan is up next. She's representing North Buncombe Middle School.
Hi, my name is Beranda Hagan and I'm a Language Arts 7th grade teacher at North Buncombe Middle School. Thanks for having me. I think we benefited in the spring from the fact that we had had the kids all year long. And it was great that at that point in the year, we were at review. And I think things went well virtually. Attendance wasn't great. Attendance is not great now, at least for us. I have a few kids that I have not met yet. But it is not because of lack of trying. It's not because we haven't called. It's not because our administrators haven't called. It's not because there haven't been home visits. And I'm not sure what we can do under those conditions. When I think of Plan A, I have to agree with our former speaker that it is, it seems soon. And it would be nice to have some consistency to see how things go because we just now really started with Plan B. I could echo a lot of the challenges and the pros and the cons of what everyone said about the Zoom, the, the doing it at the same time as you have a class, there are some challenges. Having a mask on is a challenge. I'm looking really forward to getting one of those clear ones so that they can see my face because it's just one more added barrier. But I also think that it's been wildly successful that the one consistent piece that we've had throughout all of this change, which is especially hard on teachers, that consistent piece has been our schedule. At least, I don't know how it is across the schools, across the county, but at North Buncombe Middle School, we have stuck with the same schedule since our onboarding week. And whether we have to transition at some point to virtual, because let's say if in a few, you know, in a few weeks there was an outbreak or something happened, we would still be on the same schedule. If we, if we go to Plan C, we will still be on the same schedule. Consistency is great. Another thing you can do to help support teachers is protect our time. I think about Maslow's Pyramid and how we have to first address what needs the kids, like their, their safety and their food and those things before we can actually teach them. There are some pieces about professional development at this point that are not relevant because we need to address protecting because it is definitely double duty what teachers are doing right now. I guess that's really it. Thank you so much for listening.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hagan. We appreciate it. At this time, do the board members have any questions for our teacher panelists?
Ms. Denga, I have a question for you.
Yes.
I was trying to write, I was trying to write while you were talking. You mentioned that consistently, people felt that we should basically stick where we are right now until January. Is that correct?
That, that are, that's the results of our survey and my anecdotal conversations, but mostly our survey, which represents hundreds of teachers. In fact, probably well over 1,000 teacher responses in the most recent surveys that we put out.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Go ahead.
So if we did the, if we kept the high schools remote until after the Christmas break, that would mean administering exams after Christmas. Is that their understanding?
Well, and I know we've gone through this conversation many times at board meetings and trying to fit our schedule so that we can help students take those exams before the break as much as possible. And I know the law only allows certain things to take place with exams, whether they're in-person or they're within certain days of the semester. So I think the, the law would be probably our most determining factor on how that happens.
Sure. That was my question. Thank you.
There's always a domino that falls.
Exactly. Moving target.
From the board at this time?
I have a question. Break from walking back and forth, but somebody else who teaches either at an elementary school or an intermediate school, I have a question about the K-4 versus K-5, so. Know that at this point, the governor has said we could send students back in Plan A. And that's not to say that we're going to do that October 5th, but at some point, hopefully, we will be in a position to do that. And the governor has said that it can be K through 5. And of course, here in Buncombe County, we have some districts. For instance, I'm in the Reynolds District where we only have elementary, middle and high school. And so the K-5 thing works really well for us in the Reynolds District. But then in districts where we have intermediate schools, obviously, that either we break up. So we're in a position of if we are consistent across Buncombe County schools, we're either going to be breaking up elementary schools or breaking up intermediate schools. The other option being to say, we're not going to open intermediate schools and do K-4 in those districts, but then do K-5 in the districts where that's possible, like the Owen District and the Reynolds District. So given all that complication, what are your thoughts about if you were in one of these seats and we were in a position to say, yes, it's time to think about going to K-8? I mean, to K-5 Plan A? What's your thought about that?
I'll share with you what my teachers and I, at our school, have talked about and my administrator as well, is that we, we feel like there should be some type of, of a model for, for, sorry, for intermediate schools because they are different. I'm, I'm not sure which way they should lean, if they should lean more toward the middle school or the elementary. That part, I'm, you know, not 100% sure. But I do know logistically, it's impossible to meet the needs of the 5th grade requirements and the 6th grade requirements at the same time. You know, I was just speaking with my principal about that and he was telling me about the, you know, if we went to 5th grade being A and 6th grade being B, then we would have to probably add like five more buses to get, to accommodate all that. So that's just, that's just the buses. So I think that, I think that there should probably be some consideration for that particular model. I know there's not a lot of intermediate schools, but, um, you know, maybe some type of hybrid or, or something. But, but it's, it seems impossible to do something different for both grades. I don't, I don't know how that would look.
So, for instance, we, we did make the decision that the schools, the K-5 schools could be K-5, but then we weren't going to have Plan A for the intermediate schools. How do you feel like your 5th grade parents would respond knowing that 5th graders could be back in Plan A every day of the week in a different district, but not in your district?
I do believe that from the parents that I have, have had contact with, they are anxious and ready to come back to school. That's, that seems to me to be the overwhelming thing I'm getting. They're, they're frustrated, as, as I'm sure you all have, hear these same stories, you know, dealing with that. So I know, and like I go back to my, the, the students that I worry about the most that have the highest needs. It's very difficult to meet their needs in this situation. So, you know, my, my hope is we could go back to the A. However, I think, someone else said this, that doing that the right way, maybe spending some time getting, we just started this B model. So getting some time to get acclimated to this and work back toward that A instead of just straight jumping into it. But, um, you know, I don't know how it's going to look. But I know we kind of create a, a different area to kind of consider. So I don't know. But I guess there has to be something separate for the intermediate schools because they are a different model. So I don't know. Sure, thank you.
May I ask one more question, Ms. Harris? And I'm going to direct this to anyone who would like to answer this. Could you talk to us a little bit about the impact of our current plan versus Plan A on our specialists? The EC, Title I, ELL?
Anna, can you talk into your mic? I can't hear what your question is.
My question is, what impact is this hybrid plan versus Plan A having on our specialists like Title I, ELL, EC? And what is your, what's your sense from your conversations as to which direction they would like to go? What they see is, go ahead.
Talking to the, let me find the page here. Sorry, hang on. It's been difficult doing Zoom online with the ones that I spoke to. It goes back to the, the amount of instructional time. They're actually getting less time now, now that we're on the, is that what you were asking?
It is.
They're getting less time now, now that we're in the hybrid model than they were before. And they were already like pulling their hair out doing the totally virtual version, as I'm sure you all already know. And there's just less consistency. The, the, we have some, we have some that are, you know, between two schools. Like if they're at an intermediate or middle school model, they're having to go between two schools. So lining up the schedules with classes has been more challenging doing the hybrid model since Monday. So I don't know if that was helpful or not, but.
Very helpful. Thank you.
That because we've had several conversations with specialists over the course of the last couple of months about the, the intermingling of classes and moving from one class to the next and not having opportunities for cleaning time or enough cleaning time because some of the chemicals that are used to clean the rooms require 10 minutes or so to sit so that they're effective enough. And then, you know, the aspect of going from one class to the next with one specialist who may need to meet with four or five classes, depending on the model of the, the school, bringing those potential germs and, and the virus with them or bring, catching it from another class. So I think that that concern has always been there, regardless of the model. And then when you take us from, if you were, to take us from a model, a Plan B to an A, it essentially means that we will be removing that six-foot distance, that ever-important three Ws that we say are, have probably contributed largely to the success of keeping our numbers down in Buncombe County. So when, right now, at 50% capacity, we're just, in some cases, having a hard time properly distancing at six feet. You bring 100% back, we're going to have to drop that down to three feet or less. And so that's going to take a specialist's concerns and amplify them even more. So my concern would be for them especially. And that would go for coaches who travel from one school to the other, administrators who are, are across different classes or schools, rather. So I think that that's a common concern.
Let me ask one other question. What kinds of feedback are you getting from teachers regarding the return of the vulnerable populations to the schools? The program that we have right now?
You know, I, I think teachers want to be with their kids and that teachers understand, especially our vulnerable populations, how hard it is sometimes to find all of the right ways to reach them while they're in a regular classroom environment. And so now this takes it to another level. We want to see those children. We want to make sure that it's manageable. So it's not just the health concerns, but what I mentioned before about manageability. You know, there's a lot, a lot of extra planning that goes into working this hybrid model, even the remote model. There's so much different planning because we're taking a platform that we've been doing for years and suddenly having to shift it into a virtual form. And so with the hybrid model, you know, now we're having to figure out how to plan for this group, plan for that group, differentiate for the, the vulnerable populations, and then check in with our remote kids after we've been with the kid, the children in front of us during the day. And then welcome tutoring groups in, whether it's in the afternoons, after, you know, during office hours or on Wednesdays when we're taking that opportunity to clean the buildings and we're supposed to be clear of areas so that they can deep clean and give us the opportunity to meet with one another because those PLCs haven't gone anywhere. We still need to work with one another and talk about the children and be able to, to rework lesson plans that we might need to improve. And so that adds another layer. But I think teachers are willing to do it as long as within that management plan, we find that space to be able to still collaborate and that we don't find teachers having to work 10 and 12-hour days every single day doing what is virtually the impossible.
Can I speak to the honorable?
Sure.
Spring, some of my vulnerable students excelled on remote learning. And I think it was because they had the one-on-one when they needed it and because if we have videos, they could replay the videos and because the instruction was more chunked because of the nature of having to be remote. I do think that the vulnerable populations are the ones that are suffering the most. But I think it's more of an issue of maybe the parents are at work or, you know, it's harder to manage making sure that the kids are getting up and, you know, on online and doing what they're supposed to. And that's the piece that I don't, that's the piece that we struggle with. We don't know how to, how to deal with that. But the, but the kids that are showing up, I feel like they're excelling. Oh, it is a barrier. But I, I feel like in some ways, it can also be a benefit. And, and as an ELA teacher, one thing that I've liked about the Zooms is I can quickly go through every kid and look at their papers in a way that I've thought, maybe when we come back face-to-face altogether, when I, when I go through papers, I might still have everybody Zoom because I don't have to waste all this time going to somebody else's desk and somebody else's desk and somebody else's desk. desk and somebody else's desk and somebody else's desk. I'm able to like boom, 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 go through it. And the kids have, you know, one of the difficulties with Zoom is that everybody hears everything all at once, and that's not ideal. But it's also, if you're staying really positive, it's great because it makes other kids benefit from that feedback. Like one kid the other day told me, oh, I just stole what you told that other kid and I use that in my paper. And I was like, oh, that's great. And I think it makes them feel better about their writing when, you know, it's being shared with the whole class. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board has any further questions? We are going to go ahead and toss it to a break, and when we come back, we will pick it up with our parent panelist.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
But I also know that we have the confidence in the teachers to do and to adjust to make sure that our students are getting the best education possible. I understand that it's going to take some time. Collaboration, I encourage with other teachers from other counties that are already doing it, whether it's in our own state or other states. Make that effort to go out. We want you to feel comfortable. We know it's hard work, but I think with collaboration, we'll get it together and our students are understanding. I would like to actually say, my youngest son, who is at Kane Creek, he's a B student, so he has been online the last few days with his teachers, and they've done an outstanding job. And he has said that it's been fine. There's been some little bumps in the road, but they all understand. I actually had the opportunity to observe one of these classes and thought the teachers did an outstanding job, and the students were all fine with it. So I think that that's very feasible. You know, we have different feelings and opinions. However, what we need to do is base our decisions on facts, data, and the best practice and not ambiguity. Per the Buncombe County dot org website, the percent of positive weekly COVID tests has been trending down since August 7th, August 2nd, pardon me, and over the last four weeks has been between 2% to 3% positive. The highest was 6% in May, when our children were not in school. It's not going to be 0%, it's just not even a year from now, when we have a vaccine. So we need to make sure that we're basing our information on data and figuring out what are the benchmarks that it's okay for high school students especially to be able to go back to school. The NC dot gov website, I encourage you all, I can't go through all of the information today, but I encourage you to look at that website. And I quote, "Spread of COVID-19 is more likely within a household than not within a household such as school," end quote. Also, I quote, "There can be substantial negative impacts for children and communities without in-person learning taking place regularly. We know that in-person school is fundamental to the children's development and well-being. Schools provide academic support, social and emotional skills, a safe, comfortable place, reliable food and nutrition supports, physical and speech therapy, and opportunities for physical activity," end quote. Virtual learning is not effective for everyone and is only widening the gap even further for some students. Children with IEPs and 504 plans by law are entitled to have those plans implemented, which has not been happening since March. You are now placing these students at even more of a disadvantage with the challenges they face that when they have to take the SAT and ACTs, which then will negatively impact the opportunities that they have in the future. Nicole Baker is a fellow parent of a high school student and has her master's in psychology, is an educational specialist, and an LPA that works with children ages 6 to 18. She states that since going to virtual learning, she has seen a decline in the stamina and ability to work on tests required sustained attention. Children appear to pay less attention to details, distractions within the home prohibit kids from paying attention to classes, and she voices her concern for the mental health and well-being of children. Eliminating hands-on learning for high schoolers in biology, chemistry, and physics labs and other trade or vocational subjects not only hinders their understanding, but may deny students the opportunity to discover interests and skills they have for a future career. You know, the people that are working on that vaccine right now had to learn how to use that microscope and titrate in chemistry class. You can do it. You can clean all these things. It's feasible. Dr. Jen Ashton from Good Morning America referenced a scientific study that states that isolation causes the hippocampus of the brain, which is key in emotion and memory to actually lose volume and shrink. This is alarming. The authors of the study made it clear that getting back to some routine can help to resuscitate this part of the brain. Our high school children have been isolated for six months, and keeping them isolated for any longer will only cause more physical changes and harm. You reduced the hours of synchronous learning for high school students from 10 hours a week to eight hours a week recently, when you eliminated the Wednesdays. How is that better? If they go in-person learning on an AB rotation with simultaneous synchronous learning for the students at home, they will have up to five hours a day, four days a week, totaling 20 hours of contact learning and still giving the teachers an off day for lesson planning. Logistics. Data collected from the NC Department of Public Instruction states that the average class size in Buncombe County in 2018, 2019 for Biology, English 2, Math 1, and Math 3 averaged between 16 and 19 students. If 60% have chosen the in-person learning because 40% have the option and have chosen it to do virtual, then none of these classes would average more than 11.4 students at the full 60%, or 5.7 for the AB learning plan. That is easily managed to maintain COVID precautions and safety for our students and staff. I have copy of more details, data, and facts to support reasons to allow our high school students to return to in-person learning, and I've brought copies for you to review as I know my time is limited today. In closing, we have all had to make changes, adapt, and think outside the box since March to move forward with the way we go about our daily lives. I've been working since March. We must all be flexible and realize that staying stagnant and being paralyzed by fear is not the road to new solutions and progress. We must move outside of our comfort zone to problem solve and answer the calling that must never be forgotten. Our children are our future, and we must invest in all of our children. High school students have the needs that are just as important as the needs of our K-8 students that can only be met in in-person learning. The board needs to be strong in their commitment and pledge to serve all the students. We must make decisions based on facts, data, best practice, and feedback from those affected. We cannot be satisfied to just weather the storm. We need to have the passion and the courage to reimagine the way we create and offer every student an outstanding education to build a better future. A quote from F. Douglas, and I quote, "It is easier to build strong children than to repair broken adults," end quote. Don't exclude high school students from having the opportunity, the same opportunity for in-person learning as the K-8 students. High school students deserve to be treated equally, and they deserve the very best we have to offer. Revote, allow all K-13 to have the option to resume in-person learning, starting immediately. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Petel. And if Ms. Maria Bruce could come on up next. She has a child at Fairview Elementary and at Kane Creek Middle School. And I should mention that we have some parents here who are in person, and then we've got two parents who are going to Zoom in, and so we're going to hear from the in-person parents first. So Ms. Bruce, whenever you're ready.
Hi. I don't have any speech because it was like a last-minute thing, so I'm going to try to gather all my thoughts together.
Actually, Ms. Bruce, would you mind taking your mask down just a little bit?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was hoping to do this. Well, I'm a mom, a single mom of two kids, one at Fairview Elementary, second grade, and Kane Creek Middle, in eighth grade. I'm also an interpreter and translator for Buncombe County Schools. And I'm also working right now out of my job with Buncombe County Schools, but with the children of the Spanish program immersion of Buncombe County Schools. So I have a little bit of many views, okay? So my one of you, as a mother of children in the district, I have to say, I have a very reliable internet connection, so my kids have no problems with them. And I'll talk about that. I don't know why I mentioned this, but my oldest one, he loves them because he say it's really easy, easier than being in school. And I think it is because he has a lot of free time in between. And so I see a lot of like free time with the kids, and they don't stay, definitely not, don't stay engaged in learning the whole time of the school time. So my younger one too. They both are doing great according to themselves and their teacher, so I can complain. I, I'm pretty sure it's not the same as being in school. We all can agree that it's not the same. And I'm sure we are working towards being back in school again, and I would love that because I'm mostly concerned for their, their social emotional development. I don't see them as motivated with school or extracurricular stuff or just the learning in general, you know? They're so happy to belong to an institution where they're all together doing the things, and they're really the spirit with school, nothing anymore. PE is kind of a funny thing, especially for my youngest one, like, I just kind of laugh about it, but it's very, very different. And I really want them back in school, but I also understand the concerns, and I am concerned too. But I understand that all the efforts have been done very consciously. And I also want to mention the effort that I have seen from my jobs is incredible, from the teachers, from the staff, from the parents. As an interpreter, I have to work a lot with ESL parents, that's my jobs in the ESL department. That's a whole nother story. ESL children supposed to be immersed in the English-talking world, and they are not getting this. So they are behind the screen with instruction and lessons in a language that they don't understand fully or partially. Their parents cannot help them. I cannot even imagine this, you know? How can they do this? They cannot help them with basic things. And that's very challenging. So teachers are making an incredible effort to reach out to them through us, but it's very difficult. They still kind of lost, siblings have to help sometimes. Also, the accountability is kind of very low because the children will say whatever they want to say to their parents. They can, parents cannot really check their job properly, as I call, unfortunately bilingual or other English-speaking parents. So it's very, very different for them. They also had to face a lot of social, economical challenges. They had to get hotspots. Hotspots do not work the same, from what I heard. They get cut off a lot, so we're talking huge amounts of absences in those groups. So the immigrant, the migrant group, which is ESL too, same problem. They have even more complicated issues, social and economic issues. The amount of absences in that group is really, really crazy, up to just this point where just started school. So this is very, very challenging for them. Also, parents cannot help them with their work. The Hispanic population was the one that was hit the most with the virus, actually. For some reason, they were very high numbers. I'm a medical interpreter too, so I've seen it in my other job too. So of course, at first, they were very, very scared. They were scared of sending their kids to school, so they opted for Plan C. A lot of these kids that went into Plan C, they're falling so far behind, now they won't go back to Plan B or something, and they are kind of trapped in this. So I don't know if you guys know this, but they're kind of trapped on this position. So they might need to be considered maybe to go back in Plan B or something. So I know everybody's trying. Like I said, I've seen so much effort and trying, it's incredible. I also work with, with spots of children from the Spanish immersion program. So I'm hired out of Buncombe County Schools. So they've been organizing themselves, these parents, because they're really, really desperate. That's the word I wanted. They're desperate. They are on the other side, just like the ESL children, but on the other side because all their lessons are in Spanish, all the class is in Spanish, everything is Spanish, and they don't know what the teacher is saying or what they need to do. So that's when I came and I kind of like, we call it proctor, it's kind of like a tutoring job. So I have this group of first graders and second graders, and I help them with their CISO activities, just like my daughter does, but in Spanish, because the parents are like, I don't know what it is. So they are also falling behind. So I help them to catch up. I understand the vocabulary and stuff like that. It's been very rewarding, but I've heard so much from them. They are desperate to get these children back in the classroom too, because it's immersion program. So what they explained to me is that some schools are 90-10, which is called, it's like 90% Spanish, 10% English, some are 50-50, something like that. They have different numbers. So if it's a 90% immersed, it's almost impossible when you're online. It's very, very little, you know? The teacher give them the lesson, and everything's in Spanish, and then they try to do it. But sometimes the children, at this point, cannot learn much because they were out in March from kindergarten, and now we're in first grade. And so they lost so much from March to now. If you don't use that language, I tell you, because I'm bilingual, you're going to lose it really quickly. So over the summer, it's, so they're kind of like learning all the way over again, and it's been very frustrating for the, these poor kids, I feel for them, just like I feel for ESL kids that are trying to learn English, it's the same thing. And I see it because my children are not these kind of kids. They're bilingual, but their first language is English, so it's so easy, you know? So these parents face different challenges, these kids. I guess that's kind of what it is, and I know you guys are going to make conscious decisions. We're going to adapt. People always say, oh, these kids are not going to learn their rules or this or that. I guess we're kind of forgetting that this is school, and children are there to learn, and they're trainable. And even now, I see like little bitty kids, they know the rules, six feet away, the mask on, you know? It's incredible. We are just trainable. We, you know, we adapt. We're resilient, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bruce, for your time today. And our next parent who is going to speak to us is Ms. Pot, and we're going to give Ashley a second to clean off the microphone. Safety first, everyone. And Ms. Heather Pot has a student at Nesbit Discovery Academy. Whenever you're ready.
Thank you. I have, technically, I've had two students at Nesbit Discovery Academy, and I can't say enough good things about this place and this building. And I'm just so thankful for the opportunities that they have had. One of them had a, graduated at the first graduating class and has had the opportunity now to go on to college. And it's stressful enough as a junior and senior in high school to move through these things. So I have a senior, and I'm going to tell you kind of from my perspective, but we're living in unprecedented times. We can't look back. You all can't look back at the wisdom of those before. But I feel like we can take a cue from our leader-in-me schools that we have had in our district and seek first to understand and then to be understood. And so the fact that you are listening to teachers and students and parents today speaks volumes. So thank you for that opportunity that you've given everyone. Our students, especially our high school students, which I have a senior here at Nesbit, are watching, they're learning, they're listening, and they're noticing how their role models are making decisions during this perilous time. They need to see strong leadership and leader-in-me principles modeled even in difficult times. And because we have such diverse viewpoints, I'm thankful that, and hopeful, that you're listening with fresh ears today, that you're hearing the perspectives of parents and teachers and students with fresh ears. When I was asked to be a part of this panel, I decided to poll 12 of my friends, and I just wanted to get an idea of what they were saying. And I said, if you had three minutes to talk to the school board, what would you say? And even among like-minded friends with similar values and parenting styles, we had a wide variety of viewpoints when it comes to our students and the best course of action for them. So while I understand and respect my friends that have a deep concern for safety, I was asked to share my perspective, and so that's what I'm going to do. Plan B onboarding was like a breath of fresh air in my family. My student was energized, he was excited to learn, he was grateful for FaceTime with his teachers and other students. We were cautious and faithfully observed the guidelines, and we felt safe and protected. What is discouraging for our family about Plan B and the way that we're doing this with high school right now is the fact that at the beginning of the year, we were given a choice. What would you like to see happen for your family? Now, I don't know the statistics for every school, but I asked at NDA, and here, 30% of NDA students chose online learning, which is fine, and I'm grateful they've had that opportunity. But 70% of our students asked for some form of in-person instruction, and unfortunately, they've been left without a choice. Our high school students are suffering. My senior and his friends were left without the college high that you get at the end of the junior semester, at the end of the junior year. Where might I go to college? What's it going to look like? Because they were just trying to make the best of their situation, just like everybody else. And now, as a senior, he's missing out on the synergy that happens as students talk together, whether it's social distanced or closer, but about the application process, about where they might want to go for school, or if they want to enter the workforce right away. Our counselors are doing a great job, but you can only do so much of that on Snapchat and Zoom. You can't, you need that face-to-face. They need that time to, to talk to each other about what they think they might want to do. My concern is also for our students' academic progress in comparison to other counties and neighboring states. Ninth and 10th graders, as you've heard from other speakers, need that hands-on, in-person instruction that will help them lay a firm foundation for the rest of their academic career. And juniors and seniors, they've been prepping for this their whole time, and they need that hands-on, in-person instruction and that continued push and motivation to finish strong and to think through and plan out their future goals. My son wants to be an engineer. It's real hard to get all of that instruction without being able to put anything together at the school. So while our students might be tech-savvy, many of them, according to my friends I spoke to, are barely surviving. They feel isolated and doing a lot of self-instruction. They're getting assignments and fulfilling them, but they're not having that face-to-face interaction. They're not having that ability to learn and grow from the teachers that they have. Personally, I believe we can find a compromise. Covey says win-win, and I think it's going to take the school community. I think it's going to take our board, talking to our principals, our principals talking to our teachers, our teachers talking to our students, to come up with the very best plan that we can. Our students need to receive the best education possible during this time. I believe that we must be diligent, and I believe that we must fight for their futures. So I appreciate the time here to speak today, because our students need to be on the cutting edge. Our seniors don't need to be on the cutting floor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Pot. Next up, Mr. Stacy Peak will present his thoughts. He has a child at North Buncombe Elementary. Mr. Peak?
Good afternoon, everyone. It's good to, good to be here. Thank you. I want to say first of all, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to come and speak. Thank you for taking the comments of the staff and teachers, students. That means, that means a lot. You all are in a very difficult situation in that, you know, I fully realize that whatever decision that you make is not going to make everyone happy. But I do appreciate the fact that you are taking that disinformation and looking at it so you can make the very best informed decision that you possibly can. We do have a student at North Buncombe Elementary, Ms. Devane. Ms. Jamison, the staff, faculty, and other teachers out there have done a tremendous job. I've, you know, so enjoyed seeing them work through this process there at our school. My daughter's teacher last year, Ms. Penley, when things, things just dropped and we had to go to being at home, was, was great. She stayed in communication with us and ensured some type of normalcy in, in this process. Our teacher this year, Ms. Reese, the same thing. I could not ask for, for a better experience going on this, you know, in the circumstances that we have. Circumstances are difficult, and everybody realizes that. Everybody realizes that it's, this is a challenge. You know, it was a challenge for us with juggling school and juggling, trying to juggle work. And I work for AB Tech and the NC Work System, and they have been so supportive, and I'm so thankful and so blessed. But I realize that not everybody is, is that fortunate, and not everybody is in that kind of situation that has employers that, that support them. So in my line of work, I talk to a lot of people that are out of, out of jobs, many of them due to COVID-19. And even though right now there are lots of jobs coming back onboard, lots of employers really needing people, one of the things that we keep hearing from individuals and job seekers, you know, right now with the school situations, I, I really can't commit to anything. And that's, that's understandable, because how are they going to manage that if they are a single parent? Or even if they, you know, there's two parents in, in the household, but because it's, it's difficult. It has been difficult. The, the process of the communication by the, by the principals, the teachers, was a tremendous asset for, for us and made even, even some of the lunches. Now, you all may not receive or realize what some of that meant to some of the students other than, you know, obviously, it was a nutritious meal at the sites and that they could go out. But it created some normalcy, that they could know that, okay, at 11:30, here's my break. I'm going, you know, we're going to go get something for, for lunch. And that was, that was tremendous help in, in that regard. Now, as far as the thoughts about going to a, to a Plan A. Now, most of the parents that I have, we've spoken with, they are very open to having their, their children, their K5 children return. And a lot of them for issues like needing to try to work and wanting that social, those, developing those, that socialization, the social skills development, being around other students, being around other adults besides their parents. The other thing, you know, an opportunity for them to have some, some exercise and be away from screen time so much. I mean, there's just so much screen time that's going, that's going on. So obviously, there's concerns. Yes, there's concerns. There's health concerns. Wondering what that's going to look like when somebody comes down or tests positive in the classroom, a family member tests positive. What's it going to look like if they carry that back home to, to a mom or dad or an extended family member or grandparent? Yes, there, there are those concerns there. But if there's any way to increase and enhance the protocols, the safety protocols, the social distancing, I know, you know, talking about in the commons areas, but even making it extended that into the classroom some, some way, and that's, you know, logistically very difficult. But I think that would make parents feel a lot more comfortable that have any kinds of concerns about those, those health, those health concerns and issues. I think that will, that will ease their minds some if they can continue in seeing those advanced protocols taken, taking place. Also, you know, if there are concerns, and this may already be in place, but if there are concerns by people, if, when it does come to the point that there does go to a Plan A, if there's concerns that a parent does not want their child in that, if they can then go back, if they have not already set up to be virtual, if they can go back and, and be looked at again to, to move into that, you know, I think that would be a, be an option that they would, they would welcome too. So again, thank you for hearing us today. This means a lot, seeing this process, and, you know, we, we value you. We value what you do for our community and for our schools.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. We appreciate it. Ms. Reed, could you wipe down the mic, or could someone wipe down the mic real quick before we have our next person come up? Thank you. So our next speaker will be Ms. Teresa Elder. And Ms. Elder, you can go ahead, start walking up. Ms. Elder has children at Owen Middle School and Owen High School. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I just want to say thank you for allowing me to come here and speak to you all. This does mean a lot to me. My oldest one, Charlie, is in 10th grade at Owen High School, and he's taking all honors and AP classes, and he's doing quite well. His teachers, whenever he's had an issue with Zoom meetings, he emails them and they get right back to him. My youngest one, Christopher, who's in eighth grade, we've had some hiccups. He's a straight A student, but right now he's struggling with maintaining Bs, and that's okay. This is a different time for everyone, and I think the teachers are doing a great job. I will tell you a little bit about my background. I I am an ER nurse. My husband is a surgeon, so we do commit this from the medical aspect side of it. And I won't get into the statistics, but I will say I do a lot of subbing in the county. And my concern is the behavior in the classrooms that I have seen. I don't think there's enough room in the classrooms for distancing if we go more than 50% in the classrooms. And I do think it's hard for the teachers to maintain what's going on in the classrooms as well as what's going to be going on out the hallways. I think of some of the things in the high school that we have dealt with that I see. And you add the coronavirus to it. We have the issues with vaping, you know? And these are just all things that kids do, and it's still going to be normal. The coronavirus is not going to take that away in the schools. And that's another thing that you're adding to the teachers and staff to keep on top of. I do think, and I do feel sorry for the kids that lack the internet access at home. And I agree with what other people said. I don't know what's to be done with that. I do think as a community, we've came up with some good resources as far as fire departments, libraries helping those kids out. I just think overall that we're not going to make everyone happy, but the bottom line is we need to look at the safety issue of this. And that there are going to be outliers. When I think about that one student that was just in the news right now from Appalachian University, no one wants them, no one wants that to be their child. And there will be an outlier. There will be a child that gets it. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elder, for your time today. Our next parent speaker will be Ms. Maria Kislyakova. She has a child at Valley Springs Middle School. Did I pronounce that right? I got it. Sweet.
Okay, I'll put the phone here. Yeah, so my name is Maria. Me and my family-
Oh, Ms. Kislyakova, would you mind taking your mask down?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
That's kind of nice. So me and my family moved from Moscow, Russia less than a year ago. And I'm here as an ESL parent, and I'm going to use this to not forget what I want to say. So I have a 14-year-old teenager who's an 8th grader in Valley Springs. And I can only selfishly talk about my own kid. But first of all, I want to say thank you to everybody who made this mission impossible, actually possible during this crazy time. So for my kid, as English is her second language, she sometimes has a hard time understanding what she has to do. And for, like, to some extent, I can help her with that. But I'm a childcare teacher in a toddler classroom. And sometimes by the end of the day, I forget what my name is. So I can check her, like, homework, like, twice a week, maybe, three times a week, not more often because I'm like, I'm drained by the end of the day. And sometimes she thinks she submitted something. And then when we start looking at it, I'm like, okay, you have zero here, and it seems this assignment is late. What's wrong? She was like, oh, I thought I submitted it. I was like, well, apparently you didn't. Let's check. And we start looking at it and it, and she, she, it's not like she's lying. She's actually sure she did that, but she didn't for some reason. And of course, I trust her to be responsible, but she can also be responsible, like, to, like, to a certain extent. You know, she's a teenager. She's like all over the place. And she doesn't have enough self-discipline to be sure she did everything correctly. And me and my husband, we don't have enough energy to make sure on a daily basis that she did it. And of course, I can't quit my job and stuff like that. And what I noticed is that during remote learning, her grades went kind of down, like. So they, they go up when I start asking her why, why is it not submitted? What's wrong here? And then when I, like, let it just go, she, they start going down. And during those two days when she was in school yesterday and the days, the day before on Monday, they kind of went up. It's not that I evaluate her knowledge based on her grades, but I sort of trust that the school has specifically qualified people to guide her through getting this knowledge to, to, to like, which basically is graded by grade. Yeah, my, English is not my language, so, sorry. And what is more important for me is that she's very social. So I, I remember her being excited about the yellow bus. We don't have the stuff in Russia, so when she saw the school bus, she was like, oh, my God, did you see that? I was just like, wow. I was like, yeah, that was nice. And being an immigrant, she was socially and emotionally distanced, like, even before COVID, it was a lot. And she's like, she's a very open person. She likes to talk to people. So when I come home, she's like, this happened and this happened and this happened, and she won't be quiet for at least an hour. And, and she's, like, it's been hard for her, and that's what makes me sad the most. And I understand that it's much more than just, like, take my kid back to school and just give me some break, please. It's, I understand, it's like you have to consider much more things here. But I just really hope that at some point, Plan A would be the option. Because, I mean, it's not only educational part, it's like the social part specifically for my kid because we Russian are very selfish people. So, so specifically for my kid, it would be very nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kislyakova, for sharing with us. And now we want to turn to our parents who are on Zoom. I know we have one for sure on Zoom, and we're going to try to get our second parent up as well. So if we can, I want to move out of the way. We're going to toss to Stephanie Davis. She has children at Inca Middle, Hominy Valley, and Inca Intermediate. Hi, Ms. Davis. Can you hear us okay? Suspense. Hang tight. I think she could hear us earlier. While we're waiting, Board, do you want to ask a couple of questions while we're waiting or? All right, we're going to do one Board question while we try to get Ms. Davis up, and Ms. Fates is going to ask.
The end.
I'm sorry, Ms. Fates, I'm sorry. Start that question over again.
You had, you had mentioned with us when you were talking about the Latinx community and how many of the people in the community had concerns about COVID, which made many of them go with Plan C, and then the reluctance to move to Plan B. How do you think we can best talk to parents and get them to move their children to Plan A when they have so many concerns about the health ramifications of COVID?
That's really hard.
Yeah, I figured it would be.
Well, a lot of them went into Plan C because they were so scared, okay? And now, a lot of them want to go back to Plan B. But you know, they did, like, you could not go back. You had to be committed. But some of them want to go back. And the ones that don't want to go back, how to convince them? It will take a lot of communication. And, you know, I already said, lack of communication if you don't speak the same language. But Language Services does a great job communicating with them. In my head to see things, see things. I guess the, this what you guys are doing right now is kind of like good for everybody because I like just, you know, trying, kind of like testing the waters a little bit. So I feel people are getting a lot more comfortable because we all kind of been very conditioned to all of the precautions and feeling somehow safer. So maybe after a little while of doing this, the kids going back to school a little bit, maybe they will be feeling a bit more comfortable. Also, they already know and they see their children are kind of falling behind. I think that's the biggest motivation, of course. They, they want the children to do good. They, they want to help them. And I feel a desperation sometimes. They're desperate, you know? It's like, I don't know what to do. I get phone calls directly to my cell phone all the time when, you know, it's not my work phone. But they build that trust with me and all the interpreters, and they reach out to you with kind of like funny messages, like, I'm such and such dad, and I don't know what's going on. And so, I don't know who is your daughter? You know, what school is she going in? But they are like that. They try to reach out, you know, even if they don't know me well. So I think communication, constant communication. I also work for another district, another school district, and they do so much of, a lot more, I guess, maybe than here. I'm not sure. But I do work a lot with, with Communication Department. So I do incredible amount of videos about, like, how wearing the mask, how it's going to be the bus ride from into school. Actually, videos, instructional videos. And I do the translation of the voices. So everything that's going on in very detail, they make videos all the time to the families, and they can access from home. They also do Facebook Live sessions where people can actually do questions about one topic. Let's say the right to school from the bus, in the bus. So people can ask questions. How is it going to be? You know, like, so people are a lot more involved when they asking. I mean, this is great, but this is like a constant thing of telling people how it's going to be. This is how we're going to do it. And I think maybe that would be a good thing to do, very detailed, you know? From the time you get to school, it's going to be this way. With video showing, you know? I don't see a lot of that in here, and I think that's a wonderful idea. And I think maybe if everybody gets those, those kind of maybe more instructional things or actually showing how it's going to be, maybe they feel more comfortable, okay, that's how it's gonna. Because right now, it's just imagining, you know? And people have a lot of bad things imagining in their head at this point. We all have more like tragic things imagining. It might not be actually the case. If we follow rules and we know what to do, the parents are waking up to their kids about it. But I think that would be a good thing to do. Maybe that convince them on top of their motivations they already have. It's just motivation, but they are so unsure and scared. So they're kind of frozen right now. And I feel like a lot of people are frozen right now. They were frozen before, and then they kind of eased up. But there's a lot of people still frozen with good reasons, you know? High-risk children, high-risk parents, high-risk grandparents, you know? So they need to know for sure and see the precautions being taken and how you guys are trying. Kind of an idea. I don't know.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bruce. And Ms. Davis is standing by, so we'll toss it to her.
Hello, everybody. Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to speak very briefly today. I really appreciate you giving your time, and I appreciate everything that all the educators and administrators, and especially the teachers have done, as well as the students and the parents at home. What we've been asked as parents today to speak on is how we feel about Plan A coming into effect October 5th by the governor and where we as parents stand on our students and our children returning to the classroom. I, I am concerned about proceeding to Plan A. Currently, I have five students that are BCS students. One is at Inca Middle, one is at Inca Intermediate. I have three at Hominy Valley, and I have two younger children that are still at home. My husband teaches at a local university. I also teach online full-time. I feel unfortunately, since these are the times that we're in, that we have been given the, the choice that we've had to choose between our children's education and our careers. I do feel like the five days a week remote learning with the Zooms throughout the day were very difficult for us, were very difficult for our children. And I do know that them returning on Monday and Tuesday because, because they were student, Schedule A students, they weren't happy to be back in the classroom. And I was happy for them to be back in the classroom, as you can probably imagine. I do have concerns, though. I, I think being unable to socially distance in the classrooms, given those space limitations, is something that concerns me. I understand that it's more easily, easily able to, to do the social distancing in common areas than it is in classrooms. And that does concern me. I would probably suggest proceeding with caution. I think that there are things that here locally that we have to look at before we proceed going into Plan A on October the 5th. We have to look at metrics. We have to look at contact tracing, whether or not we have clusters arise as students are coming back on that AB schedule. I also would like to see more personnel at the schools. If, if schools don't have a nurse on campus every day, I think that that's especially important given that we're in the middle of a, of a pandemic. But I think right now, we just have to look at metrics. And it's, it's basically a game. We have to see with those students, including my children, returning to the classroom, where we're going to be at in the next couple of weeks. I think that everybody's already curious that we want our children to be safe and we want them to be healthy. And I know that there are a lot of people that are not happy with where we're at right now. And that's something that we all have in common. I don't think that there's any parent, any child, any educator right now who is happy, given the situation that we're in. I, I think the thing that we keep hearing is that it's unprecedented. And it is, and, and academics are obviously important, but we can't put our children, our students, in, in dangerous situations. Likewise, we can't put our educators in dangerous situations. So I would like to, moving forward, stay open when we can stay open. And I think that it's, oh wait, it's a game. I would really find it unfortunate if our children returned to five days a week with minimal social distancing in classrooms. I would really hate for those clusters of COVID to arise, whether it's in elementary schools where there's a lower transmission rate or in the middle schools or in the high schools, if, if high schools ultimately go remote or go back to in-class line in January. I think that we need to take our time. And I feel with every parent out there who have children, particularly local children, and who have jobs, I understand how hard it is. Like I said, I have, I'm still working right now. I have two young people that, and they're both working full-time. Having said that, I also have to look at the metrics. Like, like one of my, my friends said earlier, you have to look at transmission rates. You have to look at clusters. You have to look at tracing. There are a lot, it's a lot of data here that I think that we have to take, take heed of before we move forward into getting our, our students back into the classroom. I will say that it's been a little bit easier just, I mean, it's only Wednesday, but just this, this week, my students or my children only had check-ins once today, twice per, for the older kids, and it was a lot easier. I would like to see some of the accountability taken away from the parents, from the teachers, and from the students as well. I feel like my children are very young, and I teach college students. But I feel a lot of days that my, my children are being asked to do something that my adult learners aren't even able to do. So I would like to see a little bit more flexibility and compassion in, in education. I think that the all-day meetings were problematic. I feel like the constant check-ins are problematic, that we're still expected to have normal grading policies and student accountability and attendance and all of these things coming down from the state level and that we're still probably going to have in the grade and, of course, testing is just mind-blowing to me. I, I, I think that we should take more time to look at the special student populations, like the EC learners, the Title I, the KLA. I think they should be- I think they should be integrated into the classroom in person and before some of the other students. I think that there are other things that need to be considered on the county path as well. Pandemic pods, some criminal resources. If the money and the funding is there, I would like to see more support services given for families that are not needed, English-speaking families or lower-income families, to help bridge that gap that is going to happen, given all the disparities that we're looking at from this pandemic. So I think that my closing remarks would just for you all to consider proceeding, but doing it cautiously and probably not at this time. I think that for the time being, it is in everybody's best interest to remain in Plan B and see how Plan B goes and then proceed with Plan A accordingly after we, again, look at the data, look at the metrics and see how our kids do. So thank you so much for your time.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Davis, for sharing your thoughts with us. We appreciate it. So we can get back to questions. If board members have any questions for any of our parents who are here. Hearing none. We are going to, well, first of all, thank you, BCS parents. Thank you, guys, so much for coming out today and sharing your thoughts with us. So we're going to go to a break now. And when we come back, we're going to talk to our public health professionals. So stay with us.
And Stacey, can I just say that the fact that we don't have questions is not a reflection on lack of interest. You all have done a wonderful job in terms of sharing your perspectives. And we've heard from many, many more parents in addition to you also. So we've gotten lots of good feedback and input from parents. So thanks. Thanks for being here.
... and whoever else requests it. But working really closely to make sure that we are, you know, following appropriate public health guidance and clinical guidance, I would say, and how we handle case investigation and contact tracing. And so we work really closely also with April and the school nurses, as our communal disease team and their teamwork on cases that are related to school staff or students. And, you know, our basic process for public health investigation is the same, no matter what disease we're talking about. But in this case, you know, when disease, when we get reports of positive cases of COVID, we initiate case investigation and determine close contacts and then notify those individuals through contact tracing and make sure people who need to get tested are linked up with testing, people who need medical care are linked up with medical care, and then provide guidance to employers, in this case, school systems, school administrators as needed. So I'll just leave it at that. I'm sure there'll be more questions later.
All right. Thank you, Dr. M. Next up is Stacey Saunders.
Hi, I'm Stacey Saunders, Public Health Director for Buncombe County. And I am charged with assuring and ensuring public health services and initiatives in Buncombe County, including communal disease. And work very closely with Dr. Mullendor here at Health and Human Services to complete the public health response, which includes case investigation and contact tracing, but also, as she mentioned, providing public health technical assistance and consultation to not only school systems like yourself, but to businesses, work sites, and other community partners within Buncombe County. I have data that, the up-to-date data and indicators that if you also desire, we can go over.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Saunders. And Dr. Dominique Honeycutt is up next.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Dominique Honeycutt. I am a licensed psychologist. And I am at MAHEC providing, I direct our outpatient therapeutic services. They're providing supervision to our residents, but providing direct clinical services to clients, providing supervision of our school-based clinicians, and also working with community partners to provide some consultation or education or design programs to help support the always-high-but-ever-growing, I think especially in 2020, mental health and emotional behavioral needs of children and parents and families in our community.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Honeycutt. Next up is Fletch Tove. Do you want to hold on, Fletch, and go to April Bauer? They dropped, okay. Is April on? So how about while we wait for April and Fletch to come back, board members, do you guys have any questions for? April's on? Okay. I keep talking over everyone on the Zoom. April, are you ready to introduce yourself? I'm going to stop talking now. Okay, okay. So let's get to the question portion. So Dr. Mullendor, Stacey Saunders, Dr. Honeycutt, they're all on standby to take your questions. And we're going to try to get April Bauer unmuted. She is our lead school nurse with MAHEC. Any questions for our local health officials?
I'd like to say, of helping people, all of them, for working closely with us and helping us make decisions, hopefully making good decisions and doing what we've done and their willingness to be with us. I think it's phenomenal. I have a question. We're talking about B and beyond. We're talking about B and maybe moving to A. And so could one of you or all of you talk to me about social distancing if we move to Plan A and put our students in the buildings? And that can go to any and all.
Thanks so much for the question. So this is Stacey. I'll start. And then Dr. M. Mullendor and I can tag team this one and if others have comments. So as you'd mentioned, with the option for Plan A, that's bringing more, bringing students back into the classroom where social distancing might, the six-feet social distancing might be a bit more difficult. So one of the things that has to be really considered is those three Ws, the precautions that we talk about are additive precautions, which means that put together, they are that we talk about are additive precautions, which means that put together, they are quite strong. And so when one is more difficult to do, it really requires very consistent and stringent and commitment to the other two. So wherever possible, social distancing of six feet would be desirable. When not, we would be looking to make sure that face coverings are consistently worn by staff and by students, and that cleaning and sanitation standards were met, if not exceeded. It comes to cleaning spaces, cleaning classrooms, hand washing, having sanitizer around, so that you are enhancing the two precautions that you can adhere to very strictly when one precaution might be more difficult. Dr. Mollendorf, you want to talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah, so to kind of piggyback on that, we have to remember that, you know, the definition of a close contact will remain six, within six feet for 15 minutes or longer. So if there happens to be a case in a classroom, if we identify individuals who were within that close contact range, so within six feet for 15 minutes or longer, they, you know, they will be, you know, asked, you know, told to quarantine. And so that's just something that you have to be prepared for, that if that social distancing, that six feet is not able to be maintained in a classroom, if there's a case in that classroom, we just have to, you have to be prepared for what the potential consequences of that will be. And what we've seen and heard from other counties, what we've seen in some local schools where there have been cases, that, you know, if you're able, these, some of these schools that identified a case, but they were, they were really good about keeping that six feet. So, you know, the students came in and went directly to their assigned seat, they were never within six feet of another individual for 15 minutes or longer, except, you know, maybe during their lunch period. And so when a case was identified, we only had to, you know, quarantine one individual. Versus in other counties where there was a case in a classroom, they couldn't ensure that six-feet distance was maintained by anybody in the classroom, and so they had to quarantine the entire class. So we just have to remember that what we're looking at from a public health standpoint is that six feet is really important in terms of who gets quarantined and who doesn't. And the other thing, too, is, you know, the cohorting. If you can minimize students, you know, or staff, like interacting with multiple groups of individuals and keeping that students kind of co-horted together, that also can help prevent having to mass quarantine individuals. So I think those were my key points I just wanted to say.
Can I ask a follow-up? Are you going to do that?
Go ahead. This is Cindy McMahon. I didn't tell them who I was. I have, in front of me, the toolkit that was issued by the state for strong schools, North Carolina Public Health Toolkit, K through 12. And it appears, it's somewhat difficult to interpret the guidance as far as social distancing for Plan A versus Plan B. It appears to be saying that for Plan B only, we must keep students six feet apart in the classrooms and everywhere else. And in Plan A, we need to do our best to keep them six feet apart in all sort of public areas, hallways, reception areas, cafeterias and so forth. But in the classroom, we just sort of need to do our best to keep them as far apart as we can. Am I reading that correctly? And if so, why different standards for the classroom as compared to other areas in the building? This is Anne Franklin. I believe that question was meant for whichever one of you wants to take it, or all of you at the same time.
Can you guys hear me now?
I can hear you now. We can hear, hey, April. Did you want to jump on that question?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to that. So the way the toolkit is set up, and it is a little confusing, but everything in there is a requirement, and then those sections that you reference that say under Plan B only are those additional requirements. And I think that the recommendation is to do the six feet as much as possible, even under Plan A, if you're able to. But I don't necessarily interpret it that it is required in Plan A and not in Plan B in terms of the common spaces. There's a note in here about reminding staff to stay six feet apart when they congregate under Plan A, and that's like during planning periods or lunch, but it's not specific to students. Does that make sense?
Yes. Thank you for clarifying that.
And just a reminder about the six feet, what, just want to remind folks with what Dr. Mollendorf was saying, that the plans don't then dictate the definition of the close contact, the definition of the close contact is already defined. So when six feet is not achieved, there is a higher likelihood of more close contacts within a given space. But that definition doesn't change.
Close contact. And if I understand correctly, you indicated it was proximity of less than six feet, closer than six feet, I should say, and for a period of 15 minutes or longer. Now, am I making the assumption that that would be considered a close contact if you had those conditions and the two individuals were without masks? Or is that a, considered to be a close contact even if both individuals were wearing masks? What is the position on that?
So I think I heard, I just want to repeat what I heard as the question, because it was a little muffled, but what I think I heard you ask was essentially, do face coverings or masks make a difference when we're looking at who's a close contact and who's not? Is that kind of, did I kind of sum it up?
Yes, ma'am, that would be correct. And looking at the 15 minutes or longer, if you're, if both individuals are wearing a mask and one happens the next day to test positive, would that be considered a close contact?
So unfortunately, we do not take face coverings or masks into consideration for the general public. We're looking at who is a close contact. There had been some talk several months ago that the CDC was going to maybe reevaluate that, but they did not change the guidance. And so it's, well, we're talking with healthcare professionals who are having, you know, wearing PPE and having close contact with patients, that we do consider their PPE, but for the general public, which would include students and staff in schools, we do not consider face coverings at all in determining who is, who has a close contact, who needs to quarantine. And the thing that comes from, maybe there's so much variety in these face cover, right? With PPE, with like N95s and N100s, respirators, you know, they tend to have like similar quality of product, and hopefully, you know, with healthcare professionals, they're trained in how to wear them, and so they're fit-tested and used properly. Versus face coverings come made of all different materials and worn in different ways, and so I think that is maybe one of the reasons the CDC didn't change it, is because we just can't ensure how good those face coverings maybe were. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Question that I'd like to read from Ms. Amy Churchill. So I'll just read it to, and whoever wants to answer it can. Is there a minimal distance that you guys would feel comfortable with, given we are currently, given where we are currently with our local COVID numbers? That includes percent positive hospitalizations and et cetera. This would pertain to the areas where there's not the required six feet of spacing, such as operating in the classrooms under Plan A. So the question essentially is, is there a minimal distance that you all would feel comfortable with? Whoever wants to answer it.
So we're going to do a very thorough response, which is the recommendation is six feet or more. And that's how we define the social distancing piece, is six feet. Under Plan A, that may not be able to be achieved in the classroom. And so that, whenever possible, the six feet should be, should be achieved, and that would be the recommendation. If at any time that it's difficult, like I said, in Plan A, where it may be difficult to achieve the six feet, we would be strongly encouraging the math, face coverings, and the other two Ws consistently, intrinsically, so that we have the additive effect, given that the social distancing can't, six feet can't be achieved.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I have, I have a couple, Madam Chair, if I can, I don't want to, did I interrupt somebody? I'm sorry if I did. No? So this is Pat Bryant. I represent the Irwin District. As you might imagine, we have been receiving a lot of input from various constituencies on reopening our schools, whether it's Plan A, Plan B, high school students, elementary, middle, et cetera. And there's a lot of, I think, misinformation out there and misunderstanding of the public as to how this virus transmits, because there's a lot of fear that's expressed, at least to me, in emails, and I think most of the board worried about book contact, paper contact, recess contact. All of these different areas that I've not heard are major concerns. As I understand it, it's an airborne virus from person to person. The viruses are not moving around like insects would, going from room to room. But I'm just wondering if you could give, somebody in the group could give us all a basic synopsis of how does this virus spread and what should we really be focused on and worried about in whatever level of mode we bring students back to school in the transmission and spread of this virus?
So I kind of worked it here, but I think the question was really focused on how does the virus spread, because there are some, this is Dr. Mollendorf, but some people were really worried about, like, contacting, touching things. So basically just wanting an overview of like how, what are the main modes of transmission of the virus? Is that what it was?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. So yeah, so I mean, I think early on, definitely early on, we were still learning a lot about the virus. There was a lot out there about, you know, people being worried about their mail and packages from China and, you know, contacting, things like that. But what we found is that, you know, the predominant way this virus spreads is person to person through primarily respiratory droplets that, you know, are produced when we're talking, or sneezing, or coughing. And so droplets are heavier, and so, you know, they, that's where the six, you know, people within six feet, the thought is that's where droplets kind of go. And so, so yeah, I mean, it's, I'm not worried about handling papers and objects quite as much. I mean, it doesn't mean I don't wash my hands and try to limit my touching of the objects that other people have touched. I mean, that's good for lots of things, to not, to be worried about keeping, you know, hand hygiene. But yeah, I mean, I think the, what we have found is the main, the main ways to do this is with droplets. And in terms of the air stabilization concern, I mean, that's definitely an issue for healthcare professionals who are doing procedures on individuals where small or, you know, essentially smaller droplets are put into the air and maybe can travel further. But there's still a lot, I mean, you know, it's still kind of controversial, or maybe not controversial, so we're still trying to be figured out exactly what the role of aerosols are with the virus spread. So we're really focused on droplet spread at this point.
And then to thank you for that, and to kind of piggyback on that, one of the other things that I think we've all seen a lot of in emails from our professionals' perspective, our teachers, and I'm, I don't know, I don't think I've ever heard this asked, and I'm curious. So in our schools, we have a lot of specialists in a lot of different areas. For example, our art teachers, our health and physical education instructors, our music instructors. A classroom teacher, let's say, who has, let's just pick a number, 15 students from eight in the morning to two o'clock in the afternoon in their class, is interacting with those same 15 students. Our specialist teachers many times are interacting on a daily basis with four or five times that many students coming from different rooms, and over the course of a week are probably interacting with most, if not all, of the students in that particular school. Is there any greater need or things we should consider for those specialist teachers if all other things are equal, social distance, washing, and masks, as it relates to those professionals doing their jobs in our schools?
Hey, Sasha. It's sometimes hard, it's kind of hard sometimes to hear their questions. Can you, since you're clear when you speak, can you, like, rephrase that question, or not rephrase that, but repeat it?
That was a long question, Mr. Bryant. Can you, in one sentence, can you tell me the gist?
I don't think I can in one sentence, because it's not a, it's, our specialists are interacting with many more students on a daily basis than an individual classroom teacher. If all things are equal, social distancing, masks, washing the hands, is there anything else we need to do for those specialists to ensure that we're providing the utmost safety that we can for them? Or does that even matter as it relates to comparing to a single classroom teacher who just is interacting with their 15 or so kids on that given day?
I think you got that, Dr. M.
So what I heard was, you have specialists who are interacting with a lot more, or let's just say anybody who's interacting with a lot more individuals on a daily basis. So it's more about exposure, right? So yeah, I mean, with every, you know, we always think about exposure, and with every contact, and with every encounter, you know, potentially there's an increased risk. But as you said, if everything is being followed in terms of the social distancing and the mask-wearing, and the hand hygiene, you know, again, that's what is preventing, that's the, how we prevent infection right now with COVID. So I, I think that, you know, how I would look at it is, if it was me and I was in there, as long as those three Ws were being followed, and, you know, all that toolkit stuff was being followed to really reduce that, you know, to basically eliminate that close contact, then it really shouldn't matter about how many people I'm exposed to. Again, as long as I'm keeping that six feet, that six-feet distance and wearing face coverings, we should be all right. But again, we did, you know, I did mention the word cohorting, and so that's, you know, that is that practice of keeping people grouped together and really minimizing intermingling of groups as much as possible, because again, if you get a situation where there is a case and there are close contacts in multiple groups, then that, you know, potentially leads to further spread. So if we can, if we can do those three Ws, we should be all right. So that's, I don't know if Stacy has other thoughts, or April?
Thanks, Dr. M. You just covered it. I was gonna, if you didn't cover it, I was just going to mention the cohorting piece, but I concur with you.
Thank you.
And we have another question, and this might be geared more towards Dr. Honeycutt, but anyone can answer it. Can someone speak to the concern regarding social emotional health for adolescents in an all-virtual or limited-in-person instructional environment?
Hi, this is, this is Dr. Honeycutt. There are certainly a lot of concerns for, really all children, but the needs of adolescents are certainly unique. So the, the all-virtual environment force or blocks some of the developmental tasks that are normal for adolescents, the time when they are wanting to distance some from their families and try out new peer groups and try out new tasks and test some limits and have increased independence. And yet, at a school is often, you know, an amazing place for them to do that in a very positive way, whether that is meeting new people or interacting with different professional teachers, coaches, mentors. And the all-virtual environment makes that very, very difficult. They can't have some of that independence because of safety concerns. They aren't able to safely kind of congregate in small groups because of six feet, which is absolutely, let me, you know, emphasize how important I know that that is. So it's the important, and that, and a lot of milestones are not available, whether that is dances or sporting events or gatherings with their peers. And so they, they do, they feel, I mean, as a, as a whole, certainly confronts the frustration from what Zoom fatigue, which is definitely a real thing, even though this group is generally comfortable with technology, to those they can't have the, those they can't have that contact with, there's an increased sense of isolation, of being stuck. And, and also, you know, certainly in some cases, they may not, they may have increased responsibilities, parents trying to work, trying to take care of other siblings, trying to understand increasingly complex academic tasks in a challenging environment, and they can't just walk up and ask questions or look right on the neighbor's paper. So certainly, again, increased feelings of being out of control, stuck, frustrated, acting out, you can see it across the board. I will also add, there's a group of adolescents that are doing very well with this, that it reduces the stress, lets them work at their own pace, it lets them control their environment more, it reduces distractions for some folks. So there are certainly some environmental and personality and temperamental variables, but overall nationally, the rates of mental health symptoms in adolescents are certainly, seem to be increasing. I think it's too early to say conclusively that that's all the pandemic, but I, I imagine we'll get to that conclusion. Not that it's all the pandemic, but it is. Keep your meeting.
Can I ask a question as a follow-on to that? So, talking about, this is Cindy McMahon, again, from the Reynolds District. Probably not a question for Dr. Honeycutt, but talking again about teenagers, is it still the case that trends are showing that high school age kids are catching and spreading the virus more like adults, rather than elementary school students are catching it and spreading it at a lower level? That's what I keep hearing, and I just want to check in with y'all and see if that still seems to be the case.
So yeah, I mean, there's still, again, there's still a lot of learning, there's a lot of learning, but, you know, the thought is that, and obviously this is the most recent guidance from the state that I've seen, is that, yeah, younger children may be less likely than older children to spread COVID-19. But again, newer findings are suggesting that younger kids may be able to spread it more than we thought. So again, it's, it's evolving, it's an ever-evolving situation. And so, you know, I think April just saw another pre-print study coming out that, that's, you know, is kind of looking at this. So that, that's, that's the issue, right? We're, we don't have all the answers right now. And what I told you today could be totally different in a month or, you know, two months. But, but yeah, that has been the belief that, that younger children are maybe less likely than adults to come, like, to spread it, and older teens are more like adults in that manner. So, more to come. And I don't know if April or Stacy have anything to say.
I would just say that stratification by age sort of shows that support for that as well, that our younger K-12 populations tend to have less case burden, lack confirmed case burden than our older K-12 populations when we look at just statewide data. So I just wanted to add that as some support to what you were saying. But always ever-evolving.
And while I have the floor, one more question. After several weeks of declining numbers, it seems like we've had a little uptick. Can y'all speak to that about your perspective on what's causing that, and whether it's the beginning of a new trend, or is this hopefully just an outlier?
Yeah, so thanks for the question. It's probably too early to tell that it's truly a trend, but yes, we did notice a bit of an uptick. When we look back at specimen collection and symptom onset, several of those cases within that uptick still fill within that first incubation period after Labor Day. So we may be seeing, you know, the, that man, what, what we have historically seen, which is that after major holidays, we do tend to see some increase in cases. We did also, you know, during the same period of time have easing of restrictions. So we'll be watching that for the next several days to see if that levels out and, you know, comes back to a stable place. You know, in addition to that, we, you know, we've been monitoring the new cases per day on average, and you may be following some of the briefings that we were having where we had dropped below 20 cases per day on average, and just in the last several days, just, you know, eking just above that to hovering, bouncing around sort of 21 and 22 new cases per day. And again, just watching that for, for a little while to sort of see if that truly is going to be an increase, or if that will level out and plateau, or go down. And then the other indicator of interest that, you know, while we're seeing that small uptake, uptick, our percent positivity from last week hasn't changed significantly. We, you know, we were around 5% positivity in mid-July, and have seen that decrease significantly to us now hovering somewhere in the two to two and a half range, slightly above, slightly below. And as we get in that, that very low percent positivity, you might actually see it bounce around a little bit, and that, that's the nature of data as you get to small indices like that. But still, well below the 5% that's recommended, or that the state desires. And we've been well below that for, for a continued time period now.
Thank you.
Could I ask a follow-up on that with the, with the data you just discussed, because I was going to ask the same question. Thank you, Ms. McMahon, for getting that in there. But on top of that, have you seen locally, whether it be YMCA daycares, ACA, the private schools, any of the school-type settings, settings with young people, any clusters that have broken out or things that we as a, as the largest school system in Buncombe County should be aware of and perhaps know about as we continue to evolve and make decisions going forward?
I think that question was asking if we saw any, if we've seen any clusters in Buncombe County related to child cares and schools? Is that correct?
Schools, YMCA daycares, yes, all of those, all those things.
It's hard to hear, Stasha.
So you got, you understood the question? Yeah, it's?
Okay, okay. We have not had, you know, we've had sporadic cases within child cares and some of schools. We haven't, we haven't had any clusters which are five cases or more that are connected in these settings. And again, like I said, like, you know, in some of these settings, we've seen where the institution of these toolkit instructions about, you know, the three Ws and all the infection control stuff really helped, you know, prevent further spread. And so I, I think that supports the, the true value of that guidance. But yeah, that's, that's what I can tell, say.
Thank you.
And we have one more, another question for you all. Any guidance regarding facial coverings worn by students during outside recess time?
Does anyone else want to take it? I feel like I keep talking. April? I'll answer. So again, I, you know, recess, outdoor time is one of those times where, you know, they've talked, in the toolkit, they talk about mask breaks. And so, that is one of those times. Again, you're outdoors, if you can keep, which, I, there are issues potentially keeping kids six feet away when they're outside running around. And so I think it would really depend on, like, where are they outside running around, how much space is there, and the kids are there, you know. My child goes to a local, went to a local childcare center, and now he does after-school, even, you know, he does virtual school, and then he does after-school. And, you know, there, those kids are running around all the time, and they have their face coverings on, just because it's easier that way for them to not be touching their face coverings and removing them and all that kind of stuff. But this toolkit does allow for outdoor time to be a mask break. So I think, I don't know if Stacy or April have any additional thoughts on that?
No, thanks for covering it. I just was trying to pull up the toolkit to be sure that nothing had changed since, in the updates. And I think you covered it. I just wanted, I'll just add that the toolkit does, you know, build in, does recommend building in time throughout the day where staff and children, particularly children, can take the short breaks from wearing their face covering, making sure that they are maintaining other precautions while doing that. Because I think the toolkit does, you know, it's, it's created in a way that understands the population that it's trying to serve, and that rule breaks from the mask for children in particular is likely to, to be needed.
Yeah, I'm going to say that it does, sorry, Stacy. It does, you know, the other thing I'll say is, you know, it does talk about, this is where that cohorting would be really important, right? I wouldn't like everybody take a break at the same time and everybody go pile out on the playground, right? You want to, you want to keep kids together in small groups and they're in that same cohort, not intermingling again out on the playground when they don't have their face coverings on. So I just wanted to do that.
And then, you know, the, the mask mandate, and I believe the toolkit, I'm trying to search very quickly, I believe the toolkit does also make accommodations for strenuous activity. Again, just making sure that, that folks are six feet apart, and that you're sanitizing before and after. And as Dr. M. and I have both said about the cohorting pieces, that whenever possible, creating smaller cohorts for less exposure.
Thank you.
April, and April put a chat in. Can, can I mute April? Oh, her audio is on. So she referred in only 10-minute mask breaks, yeah, for strenuous activity when they're eating.
Okay, thank you. Board members, does anyone else have any, any more questions for our health professionals? Yes, Ms. Queen?
This is Max Queen, Inca District, again, and I just wanted to ask the health professionals that are with us, given the steps that Buncombe County Schools have implemented, so far, we're doing temperature checks of the children boarding buses. All the children, anyone before they enter the schools are having temperature checks. We've increased the sanitation, improved the ventilation, abiding by the three Ws with a six-foot distancing mask, hand washing frequently. And from what I can gather, the principals in our schools are trying to create a, a culture of compliance, if you will, where the employees are abiding by these rules, and we're certainly encouraging the students to do so as well. With all that said, I would ask those of you from the healthcare arena, do you see anything else that we could be doing? And if you have children of school age, would you be hesitant to return them to school in face-to-face learning?
So I'll start again. So I think what I heard was, is there anything else that Buncombe County Schools can be doing besides what they've already implemented? And also a question about if we have school-age children, are we, like, what is our, like, what is our plan for them? Is that correct?
Would you be comfortable sending them to a school system with these same precautions in place?
Right. I mean, it sounds like everything, you know, over, all the conversations that we've had with school administration and everything that I've heard, yeah, I can't, I mean, I think that everything that is being done, that can be done. And so I, I can't think of anything off the top of my head that hasn't been implemented or isn't being implemented. And in terms of mine, I do have, as I said, I have a actual, a kindergartner, who does not attend in Buncombe County. He won't attend, he doesn't attend Buncombe County Schools. But yeah, my plan is when his school system opens, and for in-person learning, my family's decision has been to send him back to school. So I don't know, I'll leave it at that. I don't know if who else wants to talk. Stacy or April?
Thanks, Dr. M. I, I really appreciate you restating the question sometimes. And I, I saw that April had a little hard time hearing that one, too. I think that school system, you know, has done a great job from my short time here, putting in the precautions and the strategies to, you know, keep folks safe even prior to this discussion. And I think that my recommendation would be to continue to follow the toolkit. You know, as Dr. M. mentioned earlier, that this is ever-evolving. We have learned so much even from the start back in February and March, and that I, I'm still pretty confident that things will still, we'll still learn new things and things will evolve. So my recommendation is to continually watch for the updates of the toolkit, updates of the guidance, implement the strategies consistently. I think it, you know, I'm encouraged when I hear that you are building a culture of, you know, being compliant, that, that, you know, the safety of children and the, and the teachers is built into that, that culture of compliance. So continue to watch the toolkit, continue to, you know, the other recommendation would be to continue to reach out to public health for consultation and technical assistance as things do evolve. We are happy to help in any way. You know, if we don't have the answer right away, we will be glad to find it for you. So continue to do that, and that we welcome any questions that you have. One thing that I'll, you know, I just want to say that I too am a parent, and from a parent perspective, I think that it's just really important to, you know, for parents to assess the health and safety of their own children and make a decision as best as they can for their family, depending on, you know, if there are medical needs. And as Dr. Honeycutt clearly stated earlier, if there are social emotional needs that, you know, need to be, that, that there are social emotional needs that, you know, need to be, that being back in the classroom would be beneficial and would be the best choice for their child. And in that same respect, if there are families who have medical issues that, you know, were other high-risk issues, that that puts them at risk, that they, you know, continue to talk with their school and their school administrators about those, and have options that would meet their families. And I believe that the latest guidance, when the governor announced the option for Plan A, did recommend that schools consider those families who might be considering the, you know, the medical or safety or at-risk, or the risk factors for their own family that might not, that they may not want to come back into their classroom. But, you know, I want to continue to iterate that for the social emotional pieces, particularly as our state officials have said, and Dr. Honeycutt, too, that, you know, for some of, particularly our K5 population, that that social emotional piece, when safety precautions are put in place, that social emotional piece, in addition to the academic piece, families may be really needing that option as well, to be back in the classroom.
So, Dr. Honeycutt, I will, I certainly am not going to speak to the medical precautions because that's not in my wheelhouse, and we have experts here for whom it is. And I certainly don't know what every teacher or classroom is doing. And I think, you know, from the clients I work with and the professionals I've gotten to interact with, it's just, and I have been part-time at U N C Asheville before, so I do know what it was like to go tell everything with very little notice, and try and juggle all of that, although I'm not, certainly have not been doing that in the K-12. Things I would encourage thinking about are the, are those, including in those conversations and programming, students' needs for connecting with mentors, professionals, and with each other. So, for example, having breakout rooms and small group discussions, setting aside some programming time, and I know there's a lot of academics to cover, and certainly so much concern about making sure that's done, but some time to make sure students have a chance to ask questions and to interact with their peers, especially in the remote setting, in a way that, you know, they aren't able to do. And common goals, if a class, whether a classroom, or a class year, or part of a class, can take on a project that they could all have a part of, or all do, if that's reading a book aloud and recording it for, say, the younger students, or, you know, I don't want to go down the alley of ideas, but to, that we're on screen, and we're doing work, then we're off doing work, and we're submitting work. And I know students connect by text and phone and Xbox and all of that, but to connect with the environment that we all, you all, are uniquely able to provide, but to allow some of that time, to make sure we're hearing them, that they have a voice that can hear them, that they can connect with their classmates. And remember, some of them have friends in other class years, so that opportunity for, say, a sophomore to connect with the senior class. And I'll just toss that up there. It is, it is a difficult time for them. And so the more we can cushion that and buffer that, and allow them to have contact in an appropriate setting, in appropriate ways, with each other, and with professionals in settings that allow for some discussion, is a really important consideration, because some group of people is going to stay removed, at least for a while. Just wanted to share that thought.
Thank you. Do you all have any other questions? Good, good. All right. All right. Thank you all so much for being with us today, Dr. M., Dr. Honeycutt, Stacy Saunders, and April Bauer. You guys, you guys are released to go about your day. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
All right. So we're going to transition.
Thank you for having me. Love.
Thank you. So we're going to transition now to our final panel of the day. It is our principal panel, and we're going to begin with Dr. Angie Jackson, who's going to share some thoughts about the beginning of the school year. Dr. Jackson is the principal at Fairview Elementary.
What I'm going to touch on is, we've all heard tonight, but it's going to be from a principal's perspective, which I hope gives you a different eye. We all agree that our top priority is to bring our children back to school, but we need to think about that in a very slow and safe pace. Because as a principal, after listening to this health panel, my main concern is the ability to social distance under Plan A. Honestly, it would be impossible for us. At Fairview, we're a very large school, and we're an old school, with our fourth and fifth grade classrooms being very small, smaller than a typical classroom. We have moved everything out of the rooms except the bare essentials, and we are able to accommodate half of our students with six feet distancing, and that was not an easy task. With all of the students returning under Plan A, we could maybe ensure 18 to 24 inches between seats, from seat to seat, which is how we measure. With no cap size in fourth and fifth grade, class size and spacing is my main concern. In thinking about our kindergartners and first graders at half-capacity, we're rocking it. They are doing a fantastic job with two adults in the classroom, monitoring the social distancing. We have about nine children in a class right now. That's easy. We can do it. If we bring back all of the children, we are going to have a full class. Now, think about it. There are five. Most of them did not go to preschool. They have no idea how to social distance. They are all over the place. They might have a circle on the floor that they're supposed to stay in, but I can tell you, that is not going to happen. We also have children who cannot wear masks. They have oral fixations. They have their hands in their mouth all the time. That is also a concern for our littles and for our adults in those classrooms. So, again, my main concern is social distancing. Something else that's been a common theme tonight is bringing back K4 or K5. Well, in the Reynolds District and the Owen District, we have our fifth graders under the elementary roof. We have to keep our children whole, our schools whole. We cannot split fourth and fifth grade. That, that would be, that, it would just not, it would not be just. At Fairview, we have a unique situation. We have a fourth and fifth grade combination class. I believe we're the only one in the district. I can tell you, I have an amazing teacher in that class. She is working miracles. Who would have thought? I thought I was going to have a heart attack when they told me I was going to have a fourth and fifth grade combination. So I had to find the right person to do that. And she is a rock star. I do not want to see that class split. I want to see that class finish the entire year together, because we're going to see great things come in that class. And I want my school as a whole, I want them all together when we come back. We also have to consider instruction, and the instructional integrity. As you know, our teachers are amazing. They have worked very hard, and they need to know what is coming at them in order to prepare. Thank you for the remote Wednesdays. Today was phenomenal. They worked in PLCs, they worked in planning, they worked on recording their videos. We needed these Wednesdays. And our teachers need time. They need time in this plan. They need to feel success, and they need to have consistency. They have been stressed. They have cried. They're worried they're not doing a good enough job, when clearly they are. They would do whatever it takes to make this successful. And quality instruction is what Buncombe County Schools is known for. And they step up, just like our curriculum department. They always step up. They help us. But again, we need time before moving forward. The logistics of this, as a principal, has been the most challenging times in my 21 years as a school administrator. We have created five master schedules, and I actually had to go back and look to see what all those schedules were, because I've forgotten. We did a normal schedule, schedule, in hopes that we would find some normalcy. We had a schedule that we had to make that didn't have virtual teachers. We had the onboarding schedule with a 12:30 dismissal. Then we had the virtual schedule. Then we have now the AA Wednesday-off, BB schedule with a 1:30 dismissal. And then we'll have another schedule, you know, when we all come back, and when we are looking at what we're going to do with the remote-only classes. Within those schedules, we have to also look at separate lunch schedules, separate recess schedules, because we didn't want to co-mingle classrooms. We had to look at custodial schedules, HSSA schedules, coverage schedules. We just need time to prepare, to have all those pieces ready. It's like a thousand-piece puzzle. And when one piece is missing, it's not good enough. We've got to have everything planned down to the detail to make it work. Our teachers are amazing. They do whatever it takes. But they need time, and they need to experience success in this plan. And two days in, we had a great two days. It was fantastic. Everybody steps up, everybody does an amazing job. But we need a lot of time to prepare, and what that would look like to figure out the logistics of returning to Plan A.
Dr. Jackson. Next up is Travis Collins. He's the principal at Inca Intermediate.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you. Thank you for listening. You all have had long days, and I appreciate you spending this much time thinking about our children and our faculties and our staff. You know, every day in the public schoolhouse, folks do things that they never thought that they could do before. That's the work that we do. With that being said, being a part of and leading a schoolhouse right now is really tricky, right? I think all of us would say that we can juggle a lot of things at one time. But we're juggling, you know, folks with our stakeholders and our parents and our kids, who are also juggling things in their own lives, where they're worrying about their homes and their work and their kids. And it's tough. If I were to use three buckets to kind of list out the concerns that I have and to guide my thinking, based on what I've heard from our staff and our parents and our kids, they would fall into three buckets: safety, kind of like what Ms. Jackson was saying, instruction, and logistics. Safety, so far, and again, like Dr. Jackson said, we've only been in this for two days, but so far, Plan B has been great, okay? Our protocols, our facilities, most importantly, those people who take care of those facilities, all the resources that have been extended to us, they have made our school feel safe, for me and for my staff. And so we really appreciate all the work that has been done to make that happen. And it works now because we're not overwhelmed with people. It is, it is manageable. A return to Plan A immediately or very soon would, to some degree, compromise that. Currently, we adhere to social distancing guidelines, again, like I said, because we have space. I'm in a brand-new, beautiful, state-of-the-art facility, and I would not be able to do that with 25 to 30 kids in a classroom, okay? And I want you to understand this. I'm not advocating for one thing or another. I'm giving you feedback, all right? The other part that someone has mentioned, I think Dr. Honeycutt mentioned, we also were very concerned, not just about the physical safety of our kids, but that social emotional health of them. We think about that all the time. I work with 10 and 11 and 12-year-old people, okay? And like one of our staff members said this morning, they are itching for close contact. So imagine that desire of that 10 and 11 and 12-year-old child to get back to school and the excitement that we've seen in their eyes over these past couple of days, and that desire for close contact, and how we can provide for that environment with social distancing in a finite amount of space. With regards to instruction, teaching has never been more difficult. I see signs on my drive on the way home, in front of businesses and different places, that say, "Heroes work here." And I don't want to offend anybody, but I need a giant one in front of my school and these other folks' school that says, "Superheroes work here." We like schedules. We like structure. When our schedules and our structures change frequently, it causes us anxiety and stress. Likewise, our teachers find it difficult to teach multiple groups at the same time. I know you heard Angie Hall, one of our teachers, talk about that today. It's very tricky. Teaching in the AB setting is really tough for our teachers. We're going to get better at it. These first two days have been good so far, but I don't think that we can discount how incredibly difficult it is for a classroom teacher to function with children here and children on a screen. It's unbelievably difficult for them to do. And it's difficult for me to support my people the way that I really want to, when they're under and working in those conditions. The other piece, I think, that has also been mentioned is, you know, our teachers are worried about those English-language learners. We're worried about how much we're able to see our students with disabilities. We want to bring them in more, right? And this AB schedule, to some degree, might allow us to do that. But we really have to think about that space, and how many of them we can bring in at one time. That's what great teachers do. They want their kids with them all the time. They spend every waking moment during the day and at night before they go to bed worrying about their kids, right? The last piece that I wanted to speak to, and this kind of goes back to some of the things that Dr. Jackson said, is that logistics, here's where things get really tricky, if you work, and you live, and you go to school at an intermediate school, right? Governor Cooper's announcement for K5 students with regards to the possibility of Plan A as soon as October 5th would be extraordinarily problematic for an intermediate school, obviously, right? Like Dr. Jackson said, nobody, whether you are at a K4 school, or at a K5 school, or at a 5-6 school, wants their school to be on multiple, multiple plans, right? Logistically, it would be extraordinarily difficult for us to pull that off. You can imagine just what the transportation piece would look like. So if we have six buses at Inca Intermediate School now, currently serving us in our AB settings, what would that have to look like if fifth graders can ride under one set of conditions and sixth graders ride under another set of conditions? How would we staff that? So it does create some problems for us with regards to logistics. Could it be done? Can it be done? Yes. Can that happen soon? No. The last thing I would say is that we're all in this together. You've listened, and our people know that. Dr. Baldwin has said to us on many occasions, one of the trickiest things about being a school leader in these times is that you really struggle to find a win-win. It is really difficult for us to do that. But we have great families. I am so proud to serve such a, such a great and supportive community that has extended us so much grace and so much patience during this process. We are proud and we are thankful to be able to serve them in any way that we can. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Next up is Jeremy Stowe. He is the principal of Evelyn He is the principal of Evelyn Intermediate.
Hello, Madam Chair and Dr. Baldwin, members of the board. I'm really rebooting every one of my comments right now because you don't need to hear everything again and again. I found it quite interesting that two principals wrote independent of me, and we all wrote the exact same things down. So not to drag you back through that at 5:30 this afternoon, but really kind of cut into the chase here. I want to dovetail into what Dr. Jackson and Mr. Collins said. Instructionally speaking, we've had a lot of change on the field. I sat down and reviewed quickly that my school has had roughly six instructional changes since March 15th. To review them quickly, I call it first, emergency remote, right? We threw computers out the window, said catch, we're going to do remote instruction. We don't know what it is, we're going to figure it out. Then we spent the summer saying, hey, that's not sustainable, and we may have to do this again. So we've got total remote instruction, which we've really come up with a sustainable model, and that model we're doing well with. We looked for a little bit as a school and as a district as a Plan A week and a Plan B week, and we didn't go with that. We changed it to a Plan B, which is AA Wednesday, BB. Those are two more plans. We looked at them, and we thought, hey, that's not a big difference, but it is. It's a difference when you're a teacher, when you plan those units to sustain them for a week and then change and sustain for a week. So we looked at that, and then we move into the sixth piece, which would be Plan A, having all of our students back, K-5. So kind of waiting a second there and not really wanting to talk more about it because they've already talked about it, but that's a lot of instructional change in a short amount of time. I've had a lot of success in my career that says, "Good instruction takes intentional time." So whatever our decision is as a board, my piece is give your managers an opportunity to make good plans and schedules so the students and families can be successful. Couple little notes that I kind of, again, I'm rebooting a lot of things because they've already said it all. The social distance piece, if I have 25 students in a classroom, ballpark, I have 18 inches between desks, it's pretty tight. Also, one of the best forms of control that we teach all of our new teachers and teachers in general is proximity is an effective use of control, being close to that child. Hey, you know, stay with me for a second. If we space students out in six feet distancing at 25 students in a class, that's 150-foot line. It's a little hard to be close to some of those kids at the back of that 150-foot line, but it's a reality, and we'll figure it out. Moving students around the building, we will figure out the safety pieces as we kind of pop these bubbles that we talk about, but that's all of the managerial pieces that we work on a regular basis as a group of principals. Finally, logistics are a big concern. As a 5th and 6th grade school, I run the risk of having a school that'll have 5th graders in one plan, 6th graders in another. Culturally, that's difficult. That's difficult when we try to talk with our teachers about unity and combined expectations where, in fact, if we come back K-5, and Dr. Jackson's a good friend of mine, and we both are going to advocate for our schools to be whole, and that's a difficult position for this board, and I appreciate that. But for me to have a school that has some kids that are fully remote, some students under Plan B in 6th grade have half the students here on a B schedule, right? And then 5th graders all there that are not fully remote, so a lot of culture there to combine. The busing is going to be difficult. If I understand things correctly, having the 6th graders puts all my buses in Plan B. I have some pretty dense busloads. I'm looking right now at some initial planning that I've been doing with my assistant principals. I'm looking at roughly some routes being 5th or 6th loads if we have everybody back and we have to do one per seat. But we have 250 5th graders on campus, so really working through those logistics, I really think I can do it in about four loads, but a lot of things to think through there. Also, the HSSA portion is a little hard for us at Evelyn. Currently, I'm about five HSSAs short. I've had to do what I called David Roney about, I called it the nuclear option, where I took six buses and I combined them into three so that I could take driver one and driver two, and they could serve as HSSAs. We're able to make that work under limited capacity, but increasing those loads with low ridership count, I reboot it again, and that's not a concern. With all this being said, the whole piece of the goal for everybody in this room and everybody watching is to get these kids back in the building. We know that. It's the Plan A goal for everybody that's watching. The question is how and when. Speaking for all the principals that I'm friends with and my peers, I can tell you, we'll do whatever this board decides. We just need time to do it well. That's the one piece that we ask for. In closing, I've had a lot of peace in working with my students and families when I reflect on the five stages of grief as I look at what's left of this school year and what we've had since we worked from the call of March 15th. And look, those five stages of grief, it's anger, depression, denial, bargaining, and acceptance. I find myself moving through those five stages when I look at a trade that I went to work in that looked one way, and I'm standing with the mask on my face today addressing the board. So just be appreciative of that, of the staff, as they work through those stages of grief because it is hard. They didn't sign up for this, but they're doing a great job.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stowe. Next up is Jason Miller. He is the principal of Barnardsville Elementary.
Good evening, and thank you for having us this evening. My staff and I have worked seamlessly as a team to make all of our safety and health procedures a habit and part of our culture, like was mentioned earlier. We consistently perform our health and safety screenings upon entering the building. We wear our masks, consistently use hand sanitizer without even thinking about it, and maintain a distance of six feet naturally. I have never seen my staff work harder than I have in the past six months. The level of collaboration is simply impressive. If you haven't noticed, I'm very proud to lead the staff at Barnardsville Elementary School. Since August, I've described our current situation in terms of running a marathon, but in short sprints. We are currently in our fourth sprint since August. My colleagues have described those sprints, so I won't repeat that, but each sprint has required a schedule change for everyone involved, students, staff, and families. Each sprint has involved a change in the delivery of instruction. I don't have the right answer to reopening schools, but I can provide perspective from our elementary school. Most humans thrive on consistency. My staff was just beginning to feel comfortable and somewhat successful in the remote learning when we were provided in Plan B beyond. We started feeling successful, and our students started to feel successful. When we started Sprint IV this week, the AB rotation, we started a new schedule and restructured instructional delivery again. The process started over again, but it was successful. We've done well this week. When the governor made his announcement about Plan A, I could immediately see the stress and worry on my teachers' faces, not because we don't want our students back in school. We want them back. The worry and stress comes from the thought of another change, starting another sprint, changing schedules again, and restructuring instruction delivery again. My staff is strong, competent, and willing. We will do what needs to be done. I just ask that we have time to plan, time to prepare, and experience some success before we move on to the next phase. Our students need to feel success. Our staff needs to feel successful, and the families we serve need to feel successful. We want to bring our students back safely. Bringing students back under Plan A will require time to plan and prepare. If we are to maintain the six-feet distancing in Plan A, I will have to move classrooms, reassign teachers, and make huge changes to my building to make it work safely. It can be done, and we will get it done, but it will require time to plan and prepare. Thank you for listening and considering our perspective as you make these difficult decisions. We appreciate all that you do for our school system.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Next up is Principal Meg Turner. She is the principal at Owen High School.
I want to thank you for your dedication to public education and also from taking time to hear from so many stakeholders today. I know the time is late. I normally don't read from a script. I'd much rather talk, but I think given my time allotment, I'm going to choose to read from a script. First and foremost, this isn't indeed a complex time, and anyone who is certain that they know the right decision that you should make certainly is not considering all the factors. I hope as a board that you will consider and find agreement for what is the best decision through, of course, a thoughtful and respectful process that shines positive light to the Buncombe County schools that it deserves. There are three factors specifically that I want to address. The first, I'm asking for you to consider safety, not only for our students, but also for our employees and our community, that that be the foremost, but not the only consideration in your decision. We need and want all of our students back in our schools. We know that. You must own the risk that you put before each individual as your decision has dire There is so much that we cannot control with this pandemic, but we can control the exposure to the virus. Secondly, in terms of instruction, I want you to know that frequent change is detrimental. Each time you have asked our teachers to deliver instruction in a different method to a different group, they have risen to the occasion, but at a cost. When highly qualified, highly caring, and dedicated adults struggle to keep pace, we can expect the same from our students. Each time you shift gears, the clutch wears. Forsake of the highest quality teaching and learning possible in the times we are given, I urge you to make one decision for the semester for high school students and stick to it. I promise our teachers and our students will make the best of it and the most of it. Thirdly, a little different than some of my colleagues, from my perspective, the logistics of what we have been asked to do so far have proved to be the easiest. The processes that the high schools use for onboarding were very smooth. Don't misunderstand me, it took the village, but we got it done with everyone's cooperation and help, and usually with a smile on our face, and the maintenance department has been unreal. I feel very proud of all the work that we did to bring children to the building and follow the three Ws of wearing, waiting, and washing, and we did not have a single diagnosis of COVID. However, each body that you bring back adds to the complexity of the logistics and the risk. I urge you to think deeply about the details of what you are asking us to do. So keep safety first, but don't use that as the only decision. Remember, frequent change is detrimental to instruction in the human beings, and the logistics are manageable only if what you ask us to do is manageable. One of our teachers said, "Our students need us, and it hurts not to be there for them." This is indeed hard. In closing, I want to confess that I've changed my opinion on this decision several times since August. At the time of onboarding, I felt it was better to be remote due to lost instructional time that was created by that model and the risk at that time to students and staff. After the September board meeting, the 10th, September 10th board meeting, the first one in September, I'll admit, I got pretty excited about bringing students back, both as a mom who has a high school student and also as an administrator. And I told people I wanted our students back, and the sooner the better. However, with dialogue and discussion with our teachers, I realize that Plan B, hybrid model, compromises safety, instruction, and logistics in too many ways. I place tremendous trust in our teachers' voice, in their experience, and their expertise, their parents, their professionals, their children, their community members. The overwhelming feeling in our building is keeping students remote, high school students remote, until the end of the semester or until we can bring them all back is what we need to do, and so that's what I'm advocating for. I'm also going to say I feel like it's the best way for you to fulfill your stated purpose, providing safe and engaging learning environments, preparing students for their tomorrow. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Turner. Next up is Ben Alexander. He is the principal of Valley Springs Middle School.
Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Baldwin, good evening. Thank you for allowing me a moment to speak. I'm here to speak about our incredibly strong and resilient middle schools. As you know, we have seven middle schools in our system. These schools range in population size from 450 students to approximately 680. My own school, Valley Springs, is the largest of our middle schools, serving 671 students, including our progressive education program students in a wonderful program. The Valley Springs teachers are strong, well-prepared, and ready to educate students, as are all our middle grades educators. But speaking for Valley Springs as well as representing my other middle grades colleagues, I can tell you that each of our school sites are uniquely different. These differences arise from the total number of students we have, the number of teachers we have, and the number of students that have opted for entirely remote learning, as well as in-person instruction. The beauty is, though we all may be different from each other, our purpose of middle grades education is united, growing students as strong learners while helping them navigate with equally strong relationships the vast and varied changes that are taking place in their life. Each of our middle schools is mindful of the safety of our students and the safety of our faculty and staff. During the onboarding experience at the start of this year and even now, students have been wearing face coverings and maintaining appropriate social distancing measures. Of course, this is middle school, and this comes with regular reminders to students to socially distance themselves and wear face coverings correctly. Through the unique ability to team our students, our middle schools have ranged from remote learning teams to in-person teams having a remote section of students or to an amalgamation of both formats, teaching students online and in person simultaneously. The instructional aspect of advancing our students academically and supporting them socially and emotionally is valued by all middle grades educators. And though this year is imbued with much change, the necessity of consistency in scheduling is equally imperative, not just for students to advance, but for teachers to establish that relationship that helps to further kindle a fire for learning well into our students' young adult and adult years. In Plan B, middle school students are taking part every day in carefully orchestrated class changes. These range in some schools from one class change per day to four. It involves teachers and administrators in the hallway to closely monitor the change. Plan B for all middle schools is not without its challenges. However, it involves finding creative solutions to adapt to these difficulties. A primary issue is that of faculty that may be absent or taking leave under special considerations. Having an interim work with our students when they are most in need of stability is not ideal. Middle schools only have three to four teacher assistants, if that, who are used to further support our students with special education needs primarily. Some of our faculty are working solely remotely at home while having to teach students face-to-face. to face. Yet again, our middle schools find creative ways to make that happen. In summation, I say that our middle schools are strong and filled with teachers that want to educate our students in a safe, effective, and meaningful way. No educators want to compromise our students' safety, no administrator the safety of our students or our teachers. What we ask for is time to plan for any changes so we can enact those measures to keep our kids, our teachers, and our school safe, in order to advance our students in their life and our schools and their communities. Everything in the best interest of the students so that they can see a future and not fear it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Alexander. And we can now open it up to any questions that the board might have.
You guys are impressive.
Yeah.
Really impressive.
I have a question.
Of course I do.
I was going to tell them how great they are.
Well, I'll tell them that. You're great. That was fabulous.
I have a question, especially for the K-5 principals. Several of you reference the fact that you need more time. If you could put a time on that time, what would that time be?
The answer needs to come on up to the podium. Please.
I'm going to run with this just a little bit, and I hate to be open-ended, but I need this month's to plan, and I'm being really quick right now. My planning is a little bit, and I asked Dr. Jackson to come with me, because our planning is similar yet a little different, because depending on the decision of K-5 or K-4, we run into really uncharted waters where we look at having one grade remote and one grade at home. We're easing into the realities of Plan B. I don't know what all those eccentricities could be for my sixth graders who will remain in Plan B, so I need a little time to see how that works out, and then how do I create equity in a building with those three different cultures of remote, Plan B, or students with Plan A? So I would say, you know, I could have you something tomorrow. I don't know if it'd be good, and that's just the way I work, but I need a little time, and when I say time, November 1st, something like that. I'm just really throwing stuff out, but running with the question.
But wait, before you go, let me ask you one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
How would it be for you if we just said K-5 schools are going to be kept whole, and we're going to keep intermediate schools in Plan B? So K-5 could be A, intermediate schools stay in B, and you have that parent who says, "Well, how come that parent can send their fifth grader to school at Fairview Elementary, and I can't do that here?" How would that be for you?
So one of the new normals for this COVID world is, you know, I've had a long career of really working to try to meet people where they're at. Unfortunately, some of the, some of the new variables, I'm unable to do that. We work really hard to try to, try to fill those needs. What do I do? I listen to their concern and try to make a plan to see what are those, what are those major concerns they have, and what are some obstacles that their child is having, maybe accessing remote, and try to come up with some workarounds. There's not a perfect answer there, and what I have seen is, I've seen a lot of families work into the new normal, whether they like it or not, I can't tell you, but we've worked really hard at Eblin to make sure we meet the families where they are and provide for those needs. So moving forward, you know, where we have her school, K-5, and my fifth graders at home, I know that's a hard time, and I know that that creates a little inequity across this county, and I'll do what I can to try to reduce that inequity in my building. And I know that's a roundabout answer.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And Ms. Franklin was my fifth grade teacher, if you enjoy the irony of that comment.
And you turned out okay anyway.
I did well, except for spelling.
Very well, as a matter of fact. We both survived.
We did.
But the content is the same, whether we're K-5 or whether we're 5-6. The standard course study's the same, they're going to, the delivery is going to be a little different, but the students are going to learn the content.
Yes, ma'am. So we will hold to the pacing guides provided by the state and through our curriculum department to make sure that, that each child has what they, what they deserve. I can say for years, having been in a large number of different districts in this county, that there are differences from school to school and clients to client, or clientele to clientele, but one of the pieces, instructionally, there's really not an ounce of difference between each one of these school districts and the different school buildings. Everybody works hard to provide what the kids need. We would continue in that aspect to make sure that though fifth graders would be physically in the building there, my fifth graders would be physically at home or in Plan B, we would make sure that we address all those standard course of study objectives and give them everything they need, regardless of location.
I think that's a great question. Angie, do you want to, thank you, Jeremy.
Yes, ma'am.
You did real well in the fifth grade.
We actually discussed, you know, what would be the right time to come back, and I think the consensus in the room for elementary was four to six weeks. We feel like we need that much time. I'm going to have to figure out where am I going to put these children who cannot go in these fourth and fifth grade classrooms? Would I be looking at putting children in the cafeteria? Would I be looking at putting children in the gym?
Are you speaking if we go Plan A?
Plan A. Everybody comes back. That's the planning piece that concerns me more than any other part, that, and who's going to teach those children? Because I clearly cannot put them all in their fourth and fifth grade classrooms with social distancing.
Oh, I understand that. Lord have mercy.
But Madam Chair, just for clarification, Dr. Baldwin, would we not still be offering to parents in K through five the option for those that chose it initially and still wanted it to be virtual? Or would, does Plan A mean that we don't have a choice in that, and we would have to send everybody back to school?
Now, the choice remains for that semester commitment at a minimum for those parents that have opted for remote learning. That represents on average 40% of our students. But again, as all these principals have said, it's a numbers game. Numbers may vary for Fairview in a third grade class compared to Travis's sixth grade class or fifth grade class and the intermediate, or it's small numbers now. Back to what you asked, yes, that commitment remains. They would remain in remote.
So we would have a pretty good handle today of the number of kids we would be planning for if this board decided, and at whatever point they decided, to move into a Plan A schedule that the governor has said we could do. Is that accurate?
You are exactly right, although there's a caveat to this over a period of time, because I think what we heard--
Dr. Baldwin? I'm so sorry. No one can hear you on the live stream. Thank you.
You're absolutely correct, Mr. Bryant. And I think the caveat that we have to keep in mind is that what we've heard is although Plan A through the governor's office does allow a start as early as October 5th, I believe what we've heard loud and clear is we're not ready for October 5th. So there would be a period of time for planning, for preparation, and over that period of time, we'd have to just be cautious that if parents opted to make different decisions, it now becomes a different numbers game. So you're exactly correct. Today, we could take those numbers and project, but we'd have to express caution for any change in those numbers. Does that make sense?
Yes, and thank you for that. That's what I thought, but I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
I mean, I'm not in charge of this. Can Ms. Jackson speak? Can Ms. Jackson speak now?
Yeah. She's in charge. Go ahead.
Like, I mean, that's my concern, is that's what I would need time to plan for. And the amount of time that we discussed in the large group when we were meeting was the four to six weeks in order to have everything in line that we would be looking at in terms of the social distancing. Where would we put the children? Just giving teachers the consistency to move forward in the plan they're in, since they are already planning in that.
Do I remember that you said that you might have to reassign children to teachers if more children came back to your school? Did you say?
I, I was talking about the four or five combination class. I want to keep that class together. Right now, we've had, our grade levels currently for face-to-face, all but two grade levels, we're maxed out. I can't take any more face-to-face because we do not have the room. So in Mr. Bryant's question about looking at numbers, and Dr. Baldwin, right now, that's what we've been doing, is playing the numbers game, switching children from A to B to make sure we have the social distancing in the classroom. When we bring back more, because we're such a large school and our fourth, there's no cap on fourth and fifth grade, that's where the issue comes into play. Does that make sense?
It does. It does. It's just, you talk about a relationship that you've built with a group of children, and we've been imparting instruction over time, and then because of the numbers game, we have to change that.
Right.
That child would not have that consistency.
And that was for the four or five combination class, if we were to bring back fourth grade and not fifth grade, keeping that class together.
Would there be any benefit to waiting until January?
That would make us all very sad. We really want the children back in the building, but we have to know that it's going to be safe. So based on the health panel that we heard this evening, if we can't ensure the six feet distancing, and if numbers continue to escalate, I do think that that's something that we would have to consider. But as of now, I would not even like to think about that option. We really want the children back in the building.
Thank you.
I have a question for Ms. Turner. Are you going to jump right--
I'm going back here because I was going to help her with the size question, but she answered it.
Can you come up, Ms. Turner? So as you and I know, but the public may not know this, one thing that has changed since we made the decision on September 16th about keeping high schools remote is that we've learned from the state that, and of course, testing, end-of-grade testing can only be done in person. And so what we have heard is that it's, there has been some recommendation to bring back high schoolers sooner so that they can be prepared for testing at the end of the semester. I am not one who likes the testing cart to drive the horse, but I also want to listen to the experts in the room. And so if, since that is the case, if we were to go with your suggestion of keeping the high schoolers remote through the end of the semester, as is our current plan, because we haven't changed that, that would mean they would be taking those tests either after the holidays or later on. So what's your thought about when and how that testing would happen if we were to keep high schoolers remote through the end of the semester?
For the public, the end of the semester is January--
December. It's December.
December.
Eighteenth. Before the winter holiday break.
Or the winter holiday.
I think we have to work on keeping the main thing the main thing. And in my heart, testing is not the main thing, and that may not be a very popular thing to say for a school principal. I think it is important. I think accountability is important, but we are in a different day and time. And I was urging in my comments to the board to try to balance the really important factors of safety, instruction, and logistics. And I think, I would hope that you all would use that to continue to balance those decisions around testing. If we're trying to make a decision about bringing students back, we have to believe that bringing them back offers something better than leaving them at home. Our teachers were seeing 45% to 60% engagement last spring. The last two weeks, we've looked at it, we're at about 85% engagement. We're working with some Tier Three to bring some students that are not on that list in. I think we can continue to make that better. I think if I asked our students how many days, if you wanted to see students before the test, they would want to see some, but not a lot. It's a really difficult question. I think you have to balance, and you have to decide. I mean, I heard Mr. Bryant say a few weeks back, you know, now's not the time. When is it? I think that has to be balanced by the quality of what we're getting. I know there are a lot of parents, there are parents who are begging us, and I'm a mom, I want my kid in school too. Parents, y'all are under unreal pressure to bring these kids back. But I believe, because our teachers believe that the quality of the instruction that we're providing in the remote environment is the best that we can do right now, given our circumstances. That's the best I can give you right now.
Thank you.
Other question? Oh, sorry. That's all right. Other questions, anyone? All right. Well, that concludes our panel for the evening. Madam Chair, back to you.
Wow, thank you. I was trying to steal it from you the whole time, wasn't I? So you guys are welcome to stay. If this is the most pleasure you'll have in the evening, let me extend that invitation to you. And again, I want to tell you, I am impressed, and I really appreciate what you've done, and you do every day, this board does. Thank you. And like I said, if you don't have anything better to do, you can just stick around.
I would just like to thank this staff for all the hard work you did to put this together. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacia, especially.
Yeah, Stacia. Thank you.
Happy to help.
Okay, I kind of have a question. Nobody else does. I, I'm curious, as we move from where we are now, and stunned with the amount of information that we have gotten, would staff have an idea about what a different plan would be if we went to a different plan? I guess that's a Dr. Baldwin question. You can come take the mic. Is that a Suzanne question? Why don't you two do like Jeremy and Angie did over here? Would, would we, might have something?
Well, I'll give you an honest answer. I don't have it right now, because I think I'm like everybody in this room. We digested a lot of information.
Ooh.
And I think it's been good information. You know, I said this before, that our intent as a district leadership was to make sure you, the board, had as much information from as wide a range of views and constituents as we possibly could within the timeline of all of this occurring. And so I think we probably put everybody on overload, including ourselves, but I think we've accomplished what we tried, we set out for. Could we have that recommendation to you? If requested by this board, I'm going to stand right where the principals-- If requested by this board, I'm going to stand right where the principals did and said, you know what? We're known for we can do it. Are we going to give you a perfect recommendation? No. I've said this so many times, Travis said it earlier, this, this whole COVID land environment from the get-go, since March of last school year, the win-wins that we can find are incredibly rare. So we need to understand that, yes, we can put a recommendation or we can, as we did before on September 10th, if you recall, we put two options in front of this board. Neither one of them were perfect. And each one of them had a series of winners and it had a series of losers. And all I can say is that there's a good chance that the recommendations we bring to you, you're going to have that same scenario. And best-case scenario is we have more winners than losers. The tough challenge that we have in this education is that when any one of those losers could possibly be a student or a category of students, it goes against why we got in this profession. But this is the reality, and you asked for an honest answer, so I'm giving you one. If we're asked to, we're going to present to the best of our ability. We've done a lot of work over the last two weeks, gathering information, hearing, putting together scenarios. I think today, we got maybe not new information, but all of a sudden, we had the full spectrum of agendas, concerns, issues. So, you know, we would need some time to, to be able to pull that all together, to present something, but can we?
I think we have to respect that we heard that principals need time, and it's not from lack of planning and it's not from lack of, of, they want their kids back. We heard that as a clear, clear story all the way down the line from elementary to high school. But we've got to think about keeping kids safe, six feet distancing, and not interrupt the instructional flow that they're so excited about this week. I think that's key. We're seeing excitement, so need a little time. We need to think about, we've got some work to do. I heard points for the curriculum department. We've got to make sure that, you know, these students who are not being successful, are those students being invited in as part of those Wednesday sessions? What are we doing if we're not hearing from a student? We know that taking attendance provides challenges because we've got to see, see your eyes, and then we also have to see a work product. So we've, we have our marching orders as well, that we will take back and take these very seriously, and we've got to take care of the social emotional needs. It worries me to hear from families and to hear from students. You know, maybe we've got to expand our Zoom time so that there's a check-in for that particular part of the learning that needs to go on. We're also trying to balance the amount of screen time. So there are, we are on information overload, but we will take what we heard today and make adjustments.
And I do think we have to, two, two areas that we heard very clearly today. The first is the issue of spacing.
And especially when you consider Plan A for any combination of grades within K-5, that spacing becomes an issue. The spacing requirements under Plan B, six-foot spacing at all times, changes with Plan A in that that requirement for six-foot spacing no longer is in place within that classroom. That's something that we're going to have to be very transparent about as we look at Plan A. That's why I think we're all in agreement. I believe everybody in this room is in agreement that October 5th, we just began a transition back to Plan B this week, there's no way that we would be ready to consider any type of Plan A transition for any combination of K-5 October 5th. Just think about that. Just think how else, it's right around the corner. We're not ready for that. Over a period of time, we've got to address the spacing issue because COVID has not gone away. And we knew this, I think the public understands this, that as we continue to expand and open our school, COVID is a reality. It's occurring. It has occurred since last March, impacting staff, to some degree, students, not necessarily within the school building, but it came from outside. It still impacts as students and staff come into the building. That is not going away, and you heard very clearly from Public Health today, and I so appreciate the multiple questions that were asked, but we all heard the answer. When a positive case of COVID occurs and it has any relativity to someone in that school building, student or staff, whoever it may be, they're going to look at, not the wearing of the mask, although that's mandatory, they're going to look at the spacing. So if that positive COVID case, and there is an individual that breaks that 15 minutes of space violation, six feet, they now become a close contact. And we have a very clear protocol, what happens there. So that's going to take some very extensive planning to look at. It will take time. But we just, just got to be, we've got to realize that and, and say, hey, this is what we're dealing with.
So could we have, could the board have some information tomorrow that we might look at, or is that too quick?
I believe we can bring you a starting point for discussion. I think we certainly can do that based upon what we've, not only what we've heard from today, information we've heard, but also based upon all the efforts that we've put in place over the last two weeks. I think we can bring that to you as a starting point.
And, and that's not unreasonable, you don't think?
No.
No, we can do that.
And in that case, would we be amending our agenda tomorrow since it's not currently on our agenda?
If, if there's no objection to it, I think the chair can just place the item on the agenda.
OK. Is there objection?
What would, what would the item be, Madam Chair? And where would it be?
Well, I was kind of thinking we might put it on the information section. Would that be a good place? And the item would be, let's, let's look at dates of-
We typically don't have discussion and interaction on the information agenda. Am I right with that, Mr. Shatley?
You are correct, Mr. Bryant. I mean, there's nothing that prevents you from, from having interaction and discussion. However, I would say if an item is placed under information, I think that would be an area of the agenda where the public would expect you would not take any action. So I do want to make sure that that's clear.
I wasn't thinking about action. I was thinking about information.
Yeah. It certainly lines up with the aspect that we heard that our principals need time. So we know that October 1st is here. We know we're not acting on October 5th. We can talk to you about ideas and timelines, and then you could possibly take that for consideration and then make the decision at a later point.
Madam Chair, with all due respect, I would request that that be placed in an action area or someplace, and hear me out on this. Let's just say the information presented, and there's discussion, and the board collectively, seven to zero, decides that we would like to give the public knowledge now, not at some point in the future, because right now, the next point they would hear from us would be November the 5th. If the board collectively decided, seven to nothing, or five to two, or four to three, or whatever, that while the, the details need to be worked out, our, our job is at 30,000 feet. And if this board wanted to decide that November the 9th is a place that gives enough time for Dr. Baldwin and staff to plan, or felt October the 19th, or whatever date, I, I just would hate to hamstring us to not be able to do that if, in fact, at our meeting, it's the board's pleasure to do that, taking into consideration all the things we've heard today and what we would probably hear that may be different tomorrow, so that we have the ability to do that should we want to. And if a board member were to motion or, or move in that direction, and the pleasure of the board was not to do that, they simply vote it down. And I just think that we, I, I think it's pretty clear, we've, we've heard from the public pretty clearly for the last two or three weeks in a lot of different varieties. And I just think we would, we, it would be, we would be remiss not to do something, to not at least have some discussion that might possibly lead to some action, it may not.
I wasn't saying we'd do it without, I wasn't implying in any way that we'd do it without discussion. I was just asking if perhaps there is some avenue that they could bring to us that would generate discussion.
No, I agree, but Mr. Shatley's statement was that if we put it in the information agenda, that, that's a place where even if we wanted to take action, we shouldn't take action and couldn't take action. Am I correct in that?
Correct, unless you amended the agenda again at the meeting.
So if we, if we put it on the action agenda, then we have the option to vote on it or not.
Correct.
So is that-
That would be my, that would be my request. I'm just wanting that that would be my request.
All right. Are we nodding our heads that that's OK? All right, then, Ms. Matthews, I would ask that you add that item to the agenda under this action section, please.
And I think, to also answer Mr. Bryant's other question, I mean, if there's no objection, and you guys are welcome to kind of wordsmith how you want, but I would just say the action item is continued consideration of, of the reentry plan for K through 13, because I think there was some discussion about not only K-5 going through or having the ability to go to Plan A, but also the issue with the high schoolers and the end-of-grade test. I don't know if that's something else that the board wants to discuss during this, but that would be my recommendation if you wanted to discuss both topics.
And that would address what you wanted to do, is it?
Yeah, and, and it's up to the board as to whether we, we do or don't take any action on it.
Sure.
Completely up to the pleasure of the board.
My request would be if we're going to put it that way, it, it should be K-5 and 913.
That's, that's fine.
Rather than K-13, since it's clear that we're not going to be messing with-
And that's absolutely, absolutely fine and a great point because we can, really, the board can't do anything else for grades six through eight right now than what-
Go backwards.
Yeah, than what you're doing, so.
And Madam Chair, we would be prepared with those, with that recommendation to address both groups' return.
OK. All right, so I guess we're in agreement here? And do board members have anything else they'd want to contribute or ask? Hearing none, then I would be very pleased to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Wait just a minute, I have to wait until we're not on anymore. I need to quit being so verbal.